Good evening, Chair. Calls to order, public hearings for Resolution 004-24, Master Water and Sewer Plan Updates, Spring 2025. Mr. Dombach, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. The first section is Tables and Grids. Revision 1 is located at the 800 block of Prospect Mill Road, just north of Helton Avenue in Churchville. Zoned RR, it is shown on Grid D2, the Water and Sewer Service Area Maps, and is identified as Tax Map 41 and Parcel 355. Plumbering Plan Approval for the now entitled Prospect Woods subdivision creates five single-family lots. Therefore, this property is being moved from the Sewer 6 category into the Sewer 3 category. Next is Chapter 3, Section 3.13, Entitled Proposed Developments. This was revised to reflect new and completed development within the last six months. These revisions include new developments with Plumbering Plan Approval, developments which approved Plumbering Plans have expired, construction has been completed, or the project is no longer active. One new development has been added, that is Prospect Woods subdivision, previously described in Revision 1, and the addition of two projects have been removed, Eva Mar due to the purchase by the county, and Joppa Crossing, which construction has been completed. The next three pages in the workbook cover Table 3-1, Plan Developments. Table 3-1 is a tool used by the Division of Water and Sewer to assess the availability, demand, and capacity of our system with projects that have been approved for development. Commercial and industrial properties have been converted to equivalent dwelling units or EDUs to easily account for the project's demand and capacity needs. This table is updated to reflect the development activity over the last six months for seven projects. Those projects being the removal of the Eva Mar and Joppa Crossing, the addition of Prospect Woods, and the adjustments to James Run, Ridgely Reserve, Trimble Meadows, and Van Biber to reflect development over the last six months. The final page of Table 3-1 shows the revisions to the summary of the remaining residential, business, and industrially-zoned units with approved Plumbering Plans. As you can see, the net change in residential units was a reduction of 512 units, with 1,623 units remaining. The residential units in a business zone was reduced by 60 units for a total of 399 units, and there was no change to the industrial zone acreage. The next three pages are for Table 3-8, Planned Waterworks Immediate Five-Year and Ten-Year Priorities. This table was updated to reflect projects for the Division of Water and Sewer, as well as requests made by the City of Havity Grace and the City of Aberdeen and Maryland American Water, which is the water provider for the town of Bel Air. The table in this workbook includes only the projects to which changes are proposed. A comprehensive table showing all capital water projects in the county and the three municipalities can be found in Chapter 3 of the overall Water and Sewer Master Plan Exhibit 3-1, Harford County Hydraulic Diagram and Major County Water Features Existing and Proposed, was modified to convert the Ridgely's Reserve and Grace Hall Water Booster Stations from proposed to existing due to the completed construction. Next is Chapter 4, Table 4-2, Planned Capital Sewer Projects Immediate Five-Year and Ten-Year Priorities. The next two pages, like the revision for water, were updated to reflect the vision of Water and Sewer projects, as well as the requests made by the town of Bel Air and the City of Aberdeen. The table in this workbook includes only projects to which changes are proposed. A comprehensive table showing all the capital sewer projects can be found in the overall Water and Sewer Master Plan document. The next two pages are for Table 4-3, Discharge Record of Septic Haulers. This was revised to show the monthly data for 2024 for all septic haul to Sod Run wastewater treatment plant. This revision is a standard requirement from the Maryland Department of the Environment to provide current data for each spring master plan revision. Table 4-5, Harford County Sewage Pump Station Existing Flow and Design Capacity, was revised to adjust the figures for the Brentwood Park Sewer Pump Station due to a recent upgrade of the station. Harford Square Pump Station was removed due to a gravity main being constructed that allowed for the decommissioning of the station, and James Run Pump Station has been added to the table. The table, as it appears, only includes the proposed changes. A comprehensive list of all stations can be found in Chapter 4 of the overall Water and Sewer Master Plan document. Exhibit 4-1, Harford County Existing and Future Sewer Systems, was modified to remove the Harford Square Pump Station and add the Forest Hill Estates as a future pump station due to approved construction drawings. Final section in the workbook includes the requests made by the Prospect Woods Development, and then also the town of Bel Air, Maryland American, City of Havity Grace, and City of Aberdeen. That concludes the Spring 2024 Water and Sewer Master Plan presentation.
Thank you, Chris, for your update, and thank you for the time that you spent with council members going over the update in a much, much thorough fashion. Council, at this time, questions? Mr. Bennett.
Hello. Good to be with you all. Thank you for meeting earlier today with me so that we could discuss this all in detail.
You're welcome.
I had a lot of questions then, and you were able to answer them. You know, one point in our conversation earlier I just wanted to highlight was I was asking about how we can get people on wells to be hooked up with water and sewer if their wells were to ever, you know, become contaminated or a health risk. And you were just talking about the tremendous cost involved, especially once people are outside the development envelope, on getting them hooked up to water and sewer. And so it's very important that we do the work to prevent wells from becoming contaminated so that people can have safe drinking water in their homes, and so we're not running miles and miles of pipe across the county. Do you have anything to share, while there is a relatively large audience, on good practices as far as preserving our wells and taking good care of our septic systems so that we are able to keep those things running smooth across the county?
That wells and private septic would really be a Health Department question. We deal with Water and Sewer, which is a completely different entity. Maintenance, routine maintenance, would be a good practice, and if there are, you know, problems with your system, you can always reach out to Water and Sewer and see if there's availability or what it would take to get it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else? Mr. Janjordana?
Sure. Chris, thanks to you and Bill Bettin today for updates on this. I know I had a lot of questions, and apparently you guys did a good job answering them. Just wanted to make sure everything was thorough, so I appreciate the efforts. I know you're going to get back with me on the one question about the Red Pump. So some of the stuff on here, like you said, expired. We just want, I just want to know about that, and I think I'm all good. I do appreciate your time and your efforts. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordana. Anyone else seeing none? Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation.
Thank you.
There are new speakers, Mr. President.
Thank you. We'll move on to Bill 25-002, Comprehensive Zoning Harford County Maps. Mr. Grimm? Alex? How are you gentlemen doing?
I've got a second just to get.
Take your time. We've got all night.
Well, till 11 o'clock at least.
Till we set the time again.
Right.
Wish I had this many people at one of my gigs.
You will now.
Let's see about that. Good evening, Council President Vincentian, Council Members. My name is Shane Grimm. I'm the Director of Planning and Zoning, and with me tonight I have to my left Alex Rawls, who is Chief of Long Range Planning, and Matt Crock, who is Chief of Environmental Planning. It should be noted that Matt was Acting Deputy Director of the Department during much of the process. So before we start, I just wanted to give a thanks to Matt and Alex, who helped me considerably to manage the process. In fact, they managed most of the process as I was out dealing with significant personal issues at the beginning of last year, and the end of last year, and into this year. So I really thank them for all their leadership and expertise in helping us get through this process and helping me get through my personal matters and get back to the job and get back on task. So I really thank them because they have many tasks that they're already doing, so I really appreciate all their help. Also, I appreciate all the citizens that came out to each of the meetings that we had. There was a significant amount of community that came out to those meetings and spoke on different issues that were of concern to them or that they would like to support. I would like to call out a few people, too, that were very helpful during the process in getting to know what we did. Mr. Lightner, Mr. Gene Lightner is here tonight. He was at PAB meetings and was very helpful, asking a lot of questions and very interested in the process. Brianna Kuhlman, who serves on some of the committees that we have, also very interested in asking a lot of questions on behalf of the Fallston Community Advisory Board, and Chuck Mizan with 3P and in the repairment community. All three of those individuals were very respectful and spent a lot of time with me on the phone or via email or text, asking questions about the process. I'm very thankful for their respectful support of the department and my staff, and also the process. So with that, I do want to also thank the Planning Advisory Board, their support of the process, and also working with the department to review all the applications. And while we did not agree on some of those applications that were submitted, we had very respectful debate, and we are thankful for all the expertise and knowledge that they bring to the table from their various respective backgrounds. So it was very helpful to have those conversations with them as well. And all of their recommendations are available to you, which has been provided to you in our zoning log. So with that, also, I'm going to briefly go over the process. I don't want to spend a lot of time on the process. We did keep it the same as we did the last time in the 2018 comprehensive zoning. So I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on the nuts and bolts of it because there are a lot of people that would like to speak tonight, and I'm sure council has questions on some of the applications. As you've heard before, comprehensive zoning is required by our Harford County zoning code to occur every eight years. It doesn't always happen exactly on an eight-year cycle. There are many things that influence that. And also, while it's never been done before, the council or county executive can initiate a comprehensive zoning at any time for any area of the county. It doesn't necessarily have to be the entire county. And it allows at that time for citizens to request zoning changes to their property. In essence, what the process is, is the county is looking at the zoning maps and evaluating them, but also allowing the citizens to request rezoning of their property. And we review all of those applications, and I'm going to go into that a little bit more. But to ensure transparency, we made sure that we published all the applications on the county website. All of the information was available for the citizens to view. What we had is what the citizens had. That was very beneficial during the last comprehensive zoning. We got a lot of good feedback on that, so we kept it the same. Anybody could receive whatever we saw, the citizens saw. We carefully reviewed those applications, the department, as well as other departments and agencies within the county, ag preservation, Health Department, Department of Public Works Water and Sewer, Department of Public Works Roads, and other various comments that we received from internal, as well as we reviewed citizen comment as well that was provided to us in various means, whether it be through email, snail mail, or comments that were received at those public meetings. We did receive a total of 66 applications. One was withdrawn, so essentially we had 65 applications that we were reviewing. This is a historically low number, given previous comprehensive zoning reviews. I've been in every comprehensive zoning review since 2005. The last time around, we had roughly 115 applications. There were a couple county issues that we did have in there, but 115 that we did receive from citizens. And by my count, in 2008, we had 327 applications and over 400 in 1997. In 2005, that comprehensive zoning was vetoed by then-county Executive Craig. That's why we did it again in 2008. The significant lack of applications that we've received this time around compared to previous comprehensive zoning tells us a story that we're moving towards redevelopment in the county, as raw land within the development envelope is not available for rezoning because it has already been developed or is significantly encumbered by environmental issues or other issues that prevent the development of those properties. So moving forward as we get into the master plan, and I don't want to get too deep into that now, but that is something that we will definitely be looking at in the future, is moving to more of a redevelopment strategy as we move forward. The administration's approach has been to avoid recommendations that create de facto expansions of the development envelope, and follow the county's approved master plan, and more importantly, the land use plan and land use map, which is at the heart of that document, and is the guiding policy document that we look at in the sort of pyramid that we have in reviewing comprehensive zoning applications. We start with the land use plan and consistency. We also looked at correcting anomalies where they were appropriate and aligning zoning with current uses where appropriate. So with that, I'd like to thank you all for your consideration and time that you spent with myself and staff in asking questions about the applications that were received to end the process. And I look forward to hearing from you all and any questions that you may have that I can answer for you or my staff can answer, and then certainly, we look forward to hearing the public comment. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Grimm. Council, questions? Mr. Bennett?
Hello. Good evening. Good to see you. Thank you for meeting and talking through all these applications and your recommendations one by one. I was curious, again, just with the audience we have, if you could speak to, it's 10 or so places where planning and zoning and the PAB didn't align in their recommendation, and those are probably the most relevant pieces for us as a council to consider, since there was disagreement between the two bodies. And if you could maybe talk through a few of those examples, just for general knowledge of what was the difference in thought in those recommendations.
Sure. Thank you, Councilman Bennett. There was significant debate over those applications, and what I'll say is, in my opinion, and I do believe there are some Planning Advisory Board members here tonight that may speak, that can speak further to that during public comment, but I think they took a very conservative approach to looking at the rezoning requests. And in certain instances, they felt that where there were potential violations, they did not want to recommend rezoning of those properties. So again, that is really a broad blush, broad brush look at what they recommended and why they recommended those, or did not recommend in favor of those applications, or differently than the Department of Planning and Zoning. But again, those questions may come up, or those comments may come up from some Planning Advisory Board members that are here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon, how many speakers do we have?
We have 45 this evening, Mr. President.
Okay, so with 45 speakers, we're going to keep this time at three minutes per speaker, but I would ask you to please be respectful of each other again, and let's move along. If there's something that you don't have to take your full three minutes, we get it, we understand it. Call your first speaker.
John Gaffney, followed by Nancy Dance.
Name and address and the property number that you're speaking to.
My name is Patrick Gaffney. My address is 2501 Old Joppa Road, Joppa, Maryland 21085. I am opposing Application B-009.
Whatever you're ready.
Good evening, council members. Thanks for seeing me. I would like to clarify that I support Bill 25-002 and the motion that no rezoning changes should be made to this land. We ask that no amendments be made in this particular case. District B assessment shows that the zoning request is inconsistent with the land use map, and the property is located outside of the development envelope. Any changes to this property should be considered spot zoning and illegal. This area cannot handle rezoning due to lack of county resources. No water and sewer services are available or planned for this area. Traffic assessments submitted to you by Senator Jennings show this area cannot handle increased traffic of any sort. Also, the state of Maryland acknowledges a concerning trend in forest loss and has a goal of no net loss of forest, and legislates maintaining 40% of tree canopy cover. The Tree Solutions Now Act suggests this could succeed if existing tree canopy is protected. Maryland's goal is to protect existing forests, not destroy them, and after the recent ecological disasters all around I-95, we need to immediately start protecting the forests around us. Rezoning could lead to serious water issues. Light industry can include landfills, chemical processing, and sewage treatment plants, which could easily contaminate our wells through industrial encroachment. The water table in Joppa is very high. Toxic industrial activity could permanently poison our water supply. A contaminated aquifer is ruined forever. There's no repairing it. Our neighborhoods and our farms would perish. Joppa already experiences stormwater flooding. Forty acres of impervious surface would be disastrous. Toxic runoff would be sent through these wetlands into the Gunpowder River, just a few hundred yards away. From there, it flows into the Bird River, which is currently the most sediment impaired river on the western shore of Maryland. So please don't make another mistake like the embarrassing construction site at Ridgely's Reserve. We don't need another ecological disaster in our beautiful country. Leave this forest alone, please. So in summary, I'd say there's no need to build here. There's so many empty buildings and unused parking lots close by which should be used instead of destroying critical forests and wetlands. Joppa is peaceful and enjoyable. That's why we live here. Rezoning this parcel would destroy all that we love and hold dear. It should be left as agricultural and never rezoned. So please stand behind the people of Joppa, and please oppose B-009 and save this beautiful environment for future generations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Name and address and the property you're speaking to.
I'm Nancy Dance, 4051 Norrisville Road, and that's in Jarrettsville, but closest to the crossroads known as Madonna. I am speaking to Application D-003. I'm here to say that I support the legislation as far as that is concerned, as it is written now. I support the denial of Application D-003, and it is my hope that you all will vote yes as far as that goes in the legislation, and that will help keep Madonna rural. I have spoken at the public hearings, the Citizens Advisory, and we've written letters, and I've submitted a petition with over 250 signatures, also opposing Application D-003. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Carol Kickman, followed by Judith Baldwin and Kathleen Lewis.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address and property, please.
Good evening. I am Carol Nickman, 3854 Jarrettsville Pike in Jarrettsville, and I'm here in opposition of the upzoning of D-003. And I'm thankful that, as I read the director's report, they also recommend no change, and I recommend no change also from the little town of, Little Intersection of Madonna. Let's keep it ag and keep Madonna rural. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Call your next speaker, please.
Judith Baldwin.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address and property number, please.
Judith Baldwin, 4140 Norrisville Road, and I'm opposed to D-003. And I was opposed before, I'm opposed again, and I thank you so much for hearing us.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please, and property number.
Kathleen Lewis, 2506 Lady Anne Court, Churchville, Maryland. I'm speaking in opposition to E-001. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you about zoning issue E-001, the property on the corner of Reinford Drive and Churchville Road. I do not believe that additional retail, industrial, office, or business opportunities are necessary. There are currently at least eight vacant business properties in proximity to the lot up for rezoning from RR to B3. These vacant properties are at the corner of Campus Hill Shopping Center, the former Rite Aid Pharmacy, the former Caliber 7 Police Supply Store, the former gas station and mini-mart at 476 Churchville Road, at Thomas Run Station, the former Hooklot Lounge, the former Dunkin' Donuts, on Churchville Road, Harmon's Farm Produce Store, the former DJ Smokehouse, and at the corner of Churchville Road and 136, the former Crown Gas Station. Please note that the Rite Aid and Crown Gas Station have been vacant for decades. Churchville has vacant retail, industrial, office, or business properties that are available for lease. For these reasons, I am asking you to vote no on zoning issue E-001. Thank you for listening to my concern.
Thank you, ma'am.
Joe Barrow, followed by Katie Navitney, followed by Lorraine Jennings.
Good evening, sir. Name and address and property number, please.
Joe Barrow, 4327 Federal Hill Road, Street, Maryland. I'm calling, talking about D-011, which is the property on Jarrettsville Road at 165. And much like everyone said, I'm against the application for the bill, which, thank you, does not recommend that that be rezoned. So I just wanted to confirm that, you know, I don't support that application, ask that there's no amendments, and I do really appreciate how planning and zoning has taken into account the master plan, and I think Jarrettsville's key to any kind of development there, that has to really be taken care of. So as the future goes on, too, if you could consider that for Jarrettsville, that it's accommodated. So I just wanted to reassess that. I do not support the 11 being rezoned, which is at the recommendation of the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address and property number, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Katie Navatney. I live at 844 Aldino Stepney Road, Aberdeen, Maryland. And I am here tonight to speak against D-018. This is the Aldino Airport upzoning. General industrial is just not appropriate for that area. There's a lot of people here tonight that are going to have a lot of information. I grew up in this area. Most of my life was spent just on the other side, over on Bowman Road. And as a kid, sure, it was exciting to see, you know, there was biplanes, triplanes, we had some air shows, light air traffic. You know, it wasn't disruptive. It was peaceful. It was, you know, kind of a neat thing to have. And now it's grown into, you know, already into this massive airport with, you know, a ton of traffic. I keep a horse over at a stable on Aldino, sorry, on Old Level Road, and when I'm riding there, it's on a nice day, there's constant air traffic flying over. It feels like every five minutes, there's a plane, you know, trying to reach maximum altitude with their engine screaming, no exhaust, just, you know, you can be inside the barn, and it's difficult to have a conversation when there's a plane flying directly overhead. That's already a problem, right? So we don't need more noise, more traffic, more building, all that in that area that's otherwise agricultural. The Churchville-level Aldino area just isn't the place for more growth of that type. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address and property number.
Lorraine Jennings. My address is 1207 Wishingell Court, Bel Air, Maryland 21015. This is in regards to four applications, B3, B6, B7, and B8, that are to upgrade zoning along Route 1, south of Route 152, from agricultural to B3, general business. I would ask that the council reject all four applications, since the increase in traffic flow would further endanger public safety around an already unsafe intersection. I grew up at 2900 Record Road in Fallston, one house away from the intersection of Route 1 and Record Road, so I bear witness with nearly 20 years of experience with the land and roadway. A major concern is the impacts on traffic at an already dangerous intersection of Route 1 and Record Road. Recent accidents include a head-on collision in 2024, where one person had to be taken to a trauma center, a four-vehicle crash in 2018, where seven people were taken to the hospital, and a fatal crash between a box truck and a car in 2013. The list goes on. Creating more traffic for business in this area would increase the risk of even more major accidents. However, one also needs to consider the risks of increasing traffic on tangential streets like Record Road, which has a history of major accidents on its own. If one turns west onto Record Road from Route 1, you go up an uphill curve that is surrounded by an embankment. My home was located at the base of this curve. During my residency, there were three major car accidents at this curve, where people flipped their vehicles multiple times. flipped their vehicles multiple times. Two of these accidents resulted in crash victims being flown to shock trauma. In one incident, my mother was a registered nurse, and she treated the crash victim before the ambulance came. My mother mentioned that the woman's spinal cord was resting on the road pavement, soon after the victim was taken to shock trauma. My point is that the increase in traffic from business zoning will worsen major safety hazards in the community, not only at the Record Road and Route one intersection, but also along Record Road itself. In light of these issues, I ask that all four applications to rezone the area along Route one, south of Route one fifty-two, from agricultural to business be rejected. The impacts on traffic safety are just too risky. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ben Rigdon, followed by Bruce Rose and Dr. Alice O.
Good evening, sir. Name and address and property number, please.
Well, Ben Rigdon, and the, my home address is two thousand one Glenville Road. The properties that I want to talk about are thirty-seven forty Narso Road.
What's the, what's the applicant number, sir?
Uh, D zero zero four and D zero zero five. There's two properties that are together. It's the corner of Schuster Road and Narso Road.
Thank you.
I'm the landowner, and I just wanted to try to upgrade the zoning from village residential to village business. There's not a whole lot of difference in speaking and looking at what, what that zoning allows. Primarily, I guess I'm allowed to have an office, whether it be an accountant, an attorney's office, or whatever. It's not going to make a major change to that area, and I think it's, it's conformative to what's there. I mean, we have the sheriff's office on that strip that goes from Keene Dodge at the intersection of Jarrettsville on that side of the road, to Jarrettsville Federal, the Dunkin' Donuts. Harford County put up a library there. Harford County has a sheriff's precinct there, and it's only about four houses. So I think it's conformative to what's there. There's a dentist on the other corner. Smith Hardware's across the road. I know traffic is a problem in Jarrettsville. I understand that, and I'm sure that's why a lot of people want to oppose it. But this is not, I'm not going to put some kind of a nursery or some kind of a shopping center or whatever. I'm just, it's just to zoning, to make that parcel to be used, whether it be for an office or even, at this point, it's probably, it'll still be used as residential from what I've, what I understand, from what I've got from the Planning Advisory Board and from the Planning and Zoning. But I'd just like your consideration. I've lived in Harford County all my life. I know Jarretts, I know Jarrettsville. I know it very well, and I know it can be a, a problem, but I don't think that there's that much impact. And if you look at the zoning, what you're allowed and not allowed between village business and rel-, uh, village residential, it's not going to make that much of an impact. And that must have been thought through, I guess, when they put in the Harford County Library that's in Jarrettsville, and also when they put in the sheriff's precinct, which is in Jarrettsville, and the Dunkin' Donuts. I don't think, I mean, most, you know, if it's an office like I'm talking about, whether it be a, an attorney, whether it be a engineer or whatever, that off, there's, that's not going to create that much more traffic. And I was told a long time ago, and I've really, I truly believe this, don't be the last one in and shut the gate. So I'm not trying to cause a problem in the county. My family has been here for too many years, probably. But anyhow, I just, that's what I have to say, and I'd just like your consideration and really think it through. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Call your next speaker.
Bruce Rose, followed by Dr. Alice O.
Good evening, sir. Name and address and property number, please.
Good evening. Bruce Rose, reside at two oh seven Lucas Hill Drive, Churchville. I'm here speaking in opposition of zoning request for D dash zero one eight. I'm going to refer to the twenty twenty twenty-five Comprehensive Zoning Assessment Report, Section Five. This is just one conflicting area in the report. We're planning and zoning statements contradict the final decision to support partial rezoning of approximately seventy, or twenty-seven acres from agricultural to G I. In reading from the, the report, page two, section five, relationship to current element plans and county programs, sub-element A in this. Harford Next. Harford Next supports the airport. However, general industrial zoning is not consistent with the land use plan in a rural community and the surrounding, that surrounds the airport. The airport is subject to approval by the Board of Appeals. Subsection has three sentences. Two out of those three sentences contradict the plan that, or the recommendation that zoning and, um, planning and zoning set. So please vote no for D, for the approval of D zero one eight. Require the owners to follow the, the proper procedures and usage under the zoning case of fifty-eight fourteen. The, the board is well aware that there's a lot of problems. If you look around through the group tonight, there's a lot of yellow shirts here in the level and community that have problems. You're going to hear more tonight, but please consider that this has grown out. You, the PAB Board heard this in the weeks past. I know people have been in, before the county, the council before, but this is a major problem in our area, the noise, everything going. So this is a time, time to stop this problem and make corrections for enforcement of what the requirements or the approval ratings are for the fifty-eight fourteen case number. If I could ask, since there's a vacant spot, how does, through the approval process, there's normally seven people, you need four yeses.
With all due respect, Mr. Rose, we're here to listen to you tonight. We're not going to answer any questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address and property number, please.
Alice O, thirteen seven oh six Milbert Ridge Drive, Baldwin, Maryland. Mr. President, members of the Harford County Council, my name is Dr. Alice O. I am speaking tonight in favor of issue number A dash zero zero three. I'm a dentist currently practicing in Joppa, Maryland. Our office, Joppa Family Dentistry, has been active in serving the Joppa community since nineteen sixty-three. This request for rezoning from R three to B one brings the sixty-two-year-old youth to conforming status. A dental office such as ours is principally permitted in the B one zoning district. There are several properties with B two commercial zoning to the rear of our dental practice. We originally asked for B two zoning in light of our B two neighbors, but we are appreciative for the Department of Planning and Zoning's recommendation to rezone the property to B one. Many of our neighbors are current patients at the office. We have many patients who have been coming to our dental clinic their entire lives since they were young children and continue to come as adults. We plan to continue providing excellent dental care in our community. Changing the zoning from R three to B one will allow us to continue to operate our dental practice for generations to come. Thank you so much for supporting our B one zoning request.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Rose, are you still looking for your seat? Help yourself. Sorry about that.
Mark Kaplan, followed by Thomas Frye and Stephen Harris.
Call them again.
Mark Kaplan, followed by Thomas Frye and Stephen Harris.
Here comes somebody. Good evening, sir. Name and address and property number, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Thomas Frye, three four two one McCummins Road. Good evening, councilmembers. I'm here to speak to you regarding the zoning change D zero one eight. My family and I live on a farm, if my in-laws farm had been in existence since nineteen sixty. The sleepy, peaceful area of Level has totally been disrupted by the airport changes, and they continuously want more. The weekend airport with local citizens' use and storage has now become a twenty-four seven operation, with most airplanes owned by out-of-state. Military helicopters at all hours of the night, disruptions to their properties, over the over a hundred flights during the day, and upwards of forty thousand per year, which is unacceptable, dangerous for the residents and safety. And let's not forget the fatal that occurred in twenty twenty-three right across the street. The continuous demands for expansion in the name of economic development are at the detriment of the residents who live and work in the area and not invested in Harford County, like residents of Level, our children and grandchildren attending schools that are being impacted by the leaded air pollution. Airport leaders present requests for rezoning with no statements of justification nor long-range plans, environmental impacts, or risk assessments to citizens. With all the acreage changes they want, it seems that studies would be normal course of business before anyone starts moving dirt, but that hasn't been the case. For the last six months on a daily basis, the airport is moving numerous truckloads of dirt, changing elevations, creating future building sites without regard to the approval process. The Planning Advisory Board considered all impacts benefits to the county, but unanimously rejected the rezoning of D zero one eight. I'm asking you councilmembers to do the same in the interest of the environment, agricultural land, and future citizens of Churchville. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir. Name and address and property number, please.
I'm Stephen Harris. The property number is one three zero one Emaeus Court. That's in Joppa, Maryland. The property is A dash zero one two. I'm here in opposition of this. It's actually in line with the recommendation from the Advisory Board due to safety reasons as well as infrastructure not being able to support upgrading of an R one to a D three in the area due to chip and tar pavement being able to handle increased traffic, as well as the safety of our kids that are walking along those streets without a shoulder or sidewalk. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
James Thomas, followed by Kelsney, Kelsey Wisner, followed by Adam Berg.
Good evening, sir. Name and address and the property you're speaking to.
Good evening. My name is James Thomas. I'm at twenty-three fifteen Pleasantville Road, Fallston, Maryland, speaking towards B dash zero zero five. Since nineteen thirty-three, my family has operated Frank Thomas Sawmill and farmed the land at twenty nineteen Fallston Road. Over the past century, my family has had the privilege to provide lumber, as well as various agricultural products to local farms, members and community businesses and government municipalities. Over the years, the business has grown, and the goal of the rezoning is to encompass the existing footprint of our lumber production, lumber storage, hay storage buildings into B one zoning. We are proud to be one of the only two remaining sawmills left in Harford County. We have no intentions of changing the landscape or the use of the property. I am the fourth generation to be involved in the lumber mill and farming operations. I currently farm the remainder of the property to produce hay for local horse farms. Our goal is to continue the family's legacy of the mill and the farming, the land like the previous generations have done, and in hopes to pass it on to the next generation. The rezoning approval allows us our, to continue our current operations while allowing us to possibly expand and diversify within our business to help us stay competitive in the ever-changing markets. It's my goal to keep us the same as we have always been, but to have the option, if we need to, to be able to keep the property and the family to diversify. I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address and property number.
Kelsey Wisner, two thousand Highland Avenue in Bel Air, and this is for E zero zero nine. I oppose this rezoning request and support the legislation as written for no change. I've given my fair share of comments since the inception of this comprehensive zoning review cycle, so today I wanted to take a moment and share the voices of five hundred and three other citizens. These citizens who have had faith in their district representatives have signed the petition I created in opposition of this rezoning request and have provided comments that echo the findings cited in E zero zero nine's planning and zoning review. These include the major unforeseen infrastructure updates that would be required to accommodate such a development, raising safety and traffic concerns, straining resources, and creating costly burdens on the county. Historical preservation is at risk with potential irreversible consequences. And lastly, this site is a highly diverse biological community sustained by interconnected natural water sources and responsible stewardship. The bottom line is this landscape is not barren. Life is thriving here. It has been nurtured by generations of farmers, protected by surrounding buffers, and cherished by neighbors who deeply care about the environment, our families, and the quality and livelihood of our future here in Bel Air. I'm so thankful to be part of such a compassionate community. Harford County is at a crossroads. Do we continue prioritizing unchecked development, or do we stand firm in preserving the last of agricultural land as the land use map dictates? I think the choice is clear. Help us protect the land that sustains us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Adam Berg, followed by David Fizel, followed by Woody Hauer.
Good evening, sir. Name and address and property number you're speaking to.
Adam Berg, three six zero four Aldino Road, Churchville, Maryland, here to speak against property D zero one eight. As you can see, there, there's a lot of us here that have been fighting with this, but over the past several years, the economic development of our neighbors to the west has taken a toll on our economic development. We're in our greenhouses doing, we're talk, talking with customers and having to pause our conversations because airplanes and helicopters are taking off. They're over a third of a mile away from us. Other thing I want to continue with is Swan Creek starts on my family's farm, two eighteen Hope Bell Route. My kids like to play in the woods in the creek. Last year in February, we had a water sample taken off the west side of our property up against the airport. There was traces of lead in that runoff water. I'm asking you all to please strongly consider not approving this application for the safety of my children, all the neighborhood, the school that is within two and a half miles, a rec center, and the future generations of Harford County. Thank you all.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. Name and address and property number, please.
Yes, thanks. This is Dave Fizel, twenty-four hundred Cabernet Court, Fallston. I'm speaking on behalf of case number E zero zero two. We are requesting the change at this site from B one to B three zoning. This is a corner site at a light-controlled intersection immediately off of Interstate I ninety-five, which is very rare. Property sits across Route twenty-two from the heat center, directly next door to our site on the same side of Route twenty-two is a brand-new commercial development, including a roll farms, tropical smoothie cafe, mini golf course, and a multiple strip centers. Behind both of these sites is the Ripken Stadium, along with thousands of newly constructed residential homes, with more being built every day. We would like to have the ability that comes with B three zoning to develop a similar site to our neighbor, which would include retail shops, restaurants, and services to help serve all of these new homeowners, along with the rest of the surrounding community. Exit ramps along I need, I ninety-five are typically surrounded by commercially zoned property allowing for highway commercial usage. In our research, we have been unable to find any other commercial sites with similar proximity to an off-ramp of I ninety-five with the types of restrictions that our site has at the B one zoning level. Nearly all sites of similar placement have a comparable zoning to what B three would permit in Harford County. We are asking to be given that same consideration and ability at our site. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir. Name and address and property number, please.
Woody Hauer, thirty-five twenty Old Level Road. I'm speaking in opposition of D zero one eight. Right now, I'm not really sure why we're even here discussing this. The Planning and Zoning Director recommended twenty-seven acres to be upzoned when the Planning Advisory Board unanimously said no. It makes no sense. The airport is subject to special exception, thirty-five, case thirty-five fourteen. They're not in compliance with this case. Not even by little, but by a lot, they're not in compliance with it. They continue to make changes, which most of us will discuss here today, or this evening, which they're not permitted for. They operate businesses out of this location, like the flight school, the, the drone testing facility, both of them, which are not permitted to operate at this facility. When I questioned one of the individuals about the safety of the drones themselves, they said, well, it was okay because they test the drones over the sod farm. Well, the sod farm is in land preservation, which by rule is not permitted to have any commercial operations over them, so they shouldn't be operating in the sod farm, nor should they be operating it at the airport. By the Health Department report in the director's report that was released, they have listed as- as a leaking underground storage tank. There's no answer to this. There's no answer to, "Well, will we fix this before we do whatever else we want to use the 66 or the 27 acres that they have asked to have upzoned?" You have all of these items, and yet the Planning and Zoning Director wants to award them. It's like taking a kid that's been bad and giving them a cookie. It's ridiculous. That said, they're still subject to 5814. 5814 does not give them the rights to do anything with any of the property that they've asked to have upzoned. They should make the application again, because they did make the application for 5999 and then rescinded. They should make another application again for another special exception hearing. If granted, then apply for rezoning. Without permission, you're putting the cart before the horse. If upzoning is approved without a new special exception, they'll just continue to break the rules and do what they want. They are now, and they will just continue that. At some point, they need to be stopped, and they need to be held accountable and made to follow the rules like the rest of us in the county. I ask that you deny the upzoning request, make them reapply for a new special exceptions hearing, and if they do get that approved, then they can allow and request for rezoning of that property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Kelly Hauer, followed by Robert Tibbs, followed by Paul Filachi.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address and property number, please.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Hicks Hauer, and my address is, well, I represent my family at 3514 and 3520 Old Level Road. We're in opposition of D-018. Mr. President and the County Council, this property has been owned by my family for more than 50 years. We strongly, strongly oppose this expansion. We do not want this upzoning of this land. Your PAB has recommended no change in the zoning of this property, and Planning and Zoning has requested 27 acres moved from Ag to GI. This is an area of the airport that has been undergoing major, constant renovations at the detriment to the community. The never-ending flow of dump trucks with slamming tailgates and backup alarms, as well as excavators operating at all hours of the day and night, is greatly disrupting this quiet and quaint community. This recommendation allows work already to be complete, that has been completed, to be grandfathered in to an already noncompliant operation. We are currently subjected to the never-ending touch-and-goes from the flight school, and we also now have been gifted with Black Hawk helicopters from Aberdeen Proving Ground, who has two airfields, but they are using this airport to also do touch-and-goes. If anyone has been around APG and have heard these helicopters taking off, the noise is deafening. And in just three days, skydiving in Harford County will begin. This is an operation that runs weekends, and then it will be daily up until November the 2nd. These planes run nonstop from the hours of 9 to 4. The noise, again, is deafening. If you're in the flight path of these takeoffs and landings, you can no longer enjoy your own property. As a side note, according to information obtained this morning from FlightAware, which is a public site that anyone can go to, the number of departures and arrivals from this airport is up 73% from 2023. Last count was over 32,000 flights. And this does not include the flights who have their indicators turned off, and that is done intentionally, turning them off. In the Director's Report District A Assessment, there are a few points of concern. As my husband said, LUST and UST, for those not aware, are leaking underground storage tanks and underground storage tanks. What's in these tanks? How is it affecting the soil and the water in this area and the surrounding residents that are on well water? Part of that assessment included the school. Churchville Elementary School is directly affected by these nonstop flights flying directly over the schools and the playground.
Ma'am, please bring your comments to a close.
Okay. Traffic, as we know, is not supported. We just ask that you listen to us. It's in this immediate area.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir. Name and address and property number, please.
Bob Tibbs, 3545 Old Level Road, Haberdine Grace. I'm speaking in opposition to D-018. Good evening, council members. As most of you know, the community has contested the expansion of the Aldona Airport for over 10 years. I've talked to most of you about the expansion, including the county executive as late as last fall. After a community input meeting last fall, the airport withdrew their application to expand the airport. After I talked to the county executive, he told me that there would be no upzoning at the airport. I spoke with some of you about the upzoning from Ag to GI, and you said it would come from this, it would not come from the council, but from across the street. Well, that has happened. The Planning Advisory Board recommended no change to the Ag zoning. However, Planning and Zoning has made the change for 27 acres. This is not acceptable, and is up to you as the council to vote this down. There was a meeting, I'm not sure when it was held, that we were talking about, and there are plenty of extra storefronts and brownfields in the Route 40 corridor for economic development. I was told that this is one reason that the Ag zoning would be changed so that we could have economic development in this area. We do not need economic development as far as businesses are concerned in an area where there is no public sewage, no public water. Percolation is not very good as far as that is concerned. And I would ask Mr. Grimm to make a recommendation back to the council that we cancel this 27 acres from Ag to GI. Thank you very much for your consideration, and I hope you would vote against this.
Thank you, Mr. Tibbs. Good evening, sir. Name and address and property number.
Paul Filachi, 320 Marina Avenue, Perryman. Good evening. My name is Paul Filachi. Again, I'm here to provide public comment on Bill 25002, Harford County's 2025 comprehensive zoning legislation. Specifically, I'm testifying in opposition to the proposed upzoning of parcel F-002 in District F from agricultural and business to commercial industrial. This application would convert over 50 acres of primary rural land to a more intensive industrial use in the area that lacks appropriate infrastructure. This sets a concerning precedent, especially where nearby areas like Perryman have long carried a disproportionate share of industrial development in Harford County. I'm also requesting that the County Council amend the bill to rezone the Mitchell Farm and adjacent light industrial parcels in Perryman to agricultural. This change would reflect actual land use, reduce infrastructure strain, and promote more consistent balance throughout District F. I'm the president of 3P Protect Perryman Peninsula. My wife and I moved to Perryman six years from Bel Air after living there for 15 years because we love the water, we love the Bush River, we're out in our boat every chance we get when it's warm enough. I'm speaking tonight not only as a resident, but as someone who believes deeply in stewardship of land, of community, and of public trust. There's a value I learned at the Naval Academy and the military, and it's one carried through every part of my life. Zoning is one of the most powerful tools that government has, but it must be used wisely and consistently. Zoning is not a personal asset, it's a public policy, and its purpose is to serve the greater good. In Perryman, the current industrial zoning is out of step with the land, the infrastructure, the environment, and the people. Meanwhile, property owners across the county are seeking changes, some up, some down. We respect that. But we ask that the same fairness be extended to the residents of Perryman, who are asking for a zoning correction that reflects the land's historical and current use and a major obstacle, two roads, Perryman East that was never completed and Perryman West that will never be built. We don't oppose growth. We support responsible, balanced planning that reflects, respects the fiscal limits of the land and the long-term well-being of the people who call it home. That's what stewardship looks like. I respectfully urge you to amend the bill to rezone the Mitchell Farm and surrounding parcels to agricultural. Let's honor our responsibility to each other and future generations. Thank you.
Cheryl Cole, followed by Greg Passano, followed by Holly McComas.
Name and address, please, and property number.
Yes, good evening. My name is Cheryl Cole. I live at 1918 Park Beach Drive in Aberdeen. And I'm here tonight to provide public comment on Bill 25002, the Harford County 2025 comprehensive zoning legislation. Specifically, I'm testifying in opposition to proposed upzoning of parcel F-002 in District F from Ag and B1 to commercial industrial. This application would convert over 50 acres of primary rural land to more intensive industrial use in an area that already lacks appropriate infrastructure. This sets a concerning precedent, especially when nearby areas like Perryman have long carried a disproportionate share of industrial development. I'm requesting the County Council amend the bill to hopefully rezone the Mitchell Farm and adjacent LI parcels in Perryman to agriculture. This change would reflect the actual land use, reduce infrastructure strain, and promote more consistent balanced planning throughout District F. I'm a Perryman property owner, and I previously had the honor of serving in the Maryland Legislature. I understand what it means to weigh public input, planning documents, fiscal responsibility, and the long-term implications of every vote. Concern still exists today that the infrastructure in Perryman cannot support additional industrial development, and the Mitchell Farm zoning needs to be corrected to reflect that reality. I'm a conservative. I believe in personal responsibility, good governance, and smart, long-term planning. That means acknowledging when something isn't working and having the courage to fix it. The roads in Perryman were not built for the volume of truck traffic. The roads lack shoulders and not even safe for pedestrian traffic. In the middle of the night last night, two people walking along the side of the road in a downpour with no shoulder. That's the concerns we have in our community. Emergency access is very compromised back there. It's difficult for two trucks to pass on a road with no shoulders. Zoning should follow infrastructure, not the other way around. Pretending otherwise isn't economic development, it's municipal negligence. I urge this council to take the opportunity to amend the bill, rezone the Mitchell Farm, and also to vote in opposition on F-002. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please, and property number.
Greg Passano, 1826 Park Beach Drive, Aberdeen, Perryman. Property is F-002, opposing moving from agricultural business to commercial. The proposal to convert 50 acres of rural land into high-impact industrial use despite the fact that this area lacks the necessary infrastructure to support such a change, but beyond roads and zoning maps, this is about something else more critical, our health. I live in Perryman with my wife, who serves as this county as a funeral director. I work in medical sales and have dedicated my career to healthcare. I volunteer with a local organization, extreme family outreach, participate in trash pickup, and support our local law enforcement, and I care deeply about this community and the well-being of its people, and that's why I'm here. The science is undeniable. Diesel truck traffic releases particulate matter, tiny invisible particles that enter our lungs and bloodstream, even our brains. The pollutants are directly linked to asthma, heart disease, and cognitive decline. They do us harm, they kill us. Perryman is already overburdened. The truck traffic we endure daily isn't theoretical, it's relentless. It's choking our air, degrading our quality of life, quality of life, and putting our most vulnerable neighbors, children, seniors, and those with respiratory conditions at serious risk. And yet, we're being asked to absorb more, more trucks, more pollution, more industrial sprawl, while our roads deteriorate, water supply remains uncertain. With our increasing dependence on foreign countries for food, why would Harford County want to, why wouldn't Harford County want to protect our farmlands? With all due respect, our community can't handle anymore, not physically, environmentally, or morally. That's why I'm urging you to amend Bill 2025-002 to rezone the Mitchell Farm and surrounding light industrial LI parcels back to agricultural. This decision isn't about land use, it's about public health, environmental justice, and a legacy we leave behind. Please stand with the residents of Perryman and the folks with the airport fight to protect our air, our family, and our future. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address and property number, please.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Holly McComas, 1826 Park Beach Drive, Perryman, Maryland. I am here tonight to voice my strong opposition on the proposed upzoning of parcel F-002, District F, from agricultural and business to commercial industrial, as outlined in Bill 25-002, Harford County's 2025 comprehensive zoning legislation. This proposal would convert more than 50 acres of predominantly rural land into intensive industrial zone. Despite the fact that the area lacks appropriate infrastructure to support current traffic, roads are narrow, already overburdened. Emergency response times are suffering. School buses must carefully navigate tight corridors, and residents, many of them elderly, face increased dangers on a daily basis. To make matters worse, nearby communities like Perryman have long shouldered more than their fair share of industrial growth. This proposed zoning would only deepen that imbalance. In light of this, I am also requesting that the County Council amend Bill 25-002 to rezone the Mitchell Farm and adjacent light industrial parcels in Perryman to agriculture. This adjustment would better reflect the actual land use, relieve mounting infrastructure stress, and bring a sense of equity and long-term vision to planning in District F. I speak to you today not only as a Perryman property owner, but also as a funeral director who has served Harford County families for generations. My family's roots run deep, so deep, in fact, that some of my family members were signers of the Bush Declaration. Their legacy was a promise to protect the land and water of this community, a promise I still believe in today. That legacy isn't just history, it is responsibility. As someone who works with grieving families, I think every day about dignity, public safety, and what we leave behind for our future generations. And what I see in this zoning proposal is not responsible planning, it is short-sighted and unsustainable. Let me be clear, I'm not against growth. I'm against unchecked industrial development that ignores both the limitations of our infrastructure and the importance of our shared history. This is a moment to make the right choice for our residents, our roads, our environment, and our legacy. I respectfully urge you to vote no on the upzoning parcel of parcel F-002 and amend the bill to rezone the Mitchell Farm and surrounding parcels to agriculture. Thank you for your time and commitment to Harford County.
Thank you, ma'am.
Gloria Moon, followed by Melvin Hager and Ellen Shinelli.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address and property number, please.
Sure. Gloria Moon, 2519 Jerusalem Road in Joppa. A-7, 8, 9, and 10. Those four properties are the Austin LLC and surrounding. They're asking for GI from CI. They are surrounded by CI. They run a very nice business grinding tires, and I think the county is one of their clients. And with their zoning that they have now, they're quite able to expand, so that's not a problem for them. The problem is on Route 7. There were 17 properties on Route 7 that Planning Advisory Board and Planning and Zoning denied. Planning Advisory Board denied these four for Austin LLC and Environs, and Planning and Zoning said, "Yes, go ahead with it." They have constraints. They have major problems. They have steep slopes. They have DNR properties. I think two of them are in the green infrastructure plan for aquatics and forestry. It's a two-lane road. They're backed by the CSX, it's steep slopes down to the CSX. If they want public sewer, I've been told, they must tunnel under the CSX. So they don't have public sewer, they don't have public water. Why on earth would you put GI there? The only thing that Planning and Zoning suggested or spoke that they wanted it is because the county needs more GI. Well, why don't we do what the county executive Well, why don't we do what the county executive Cassely said and revitalize Route Forty? Let's put it there. Let's not put it on land that is so severely constrained with a two, little two-lane road. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Dixon, are you saying there's people in the lobby?
I believe they're here actually for the next session.
Okay.
I'm just trying to verify that now with the deputies.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead. Call your next speaker.
Melvin Hager, followed by Ellen Shinelli.
Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record, please, plus property number.
Melvin Hager, thirty-six thirty-three Old Level Road, and I'm here to oppose zoning change on D zero one eight. If this zoning is approved, air traffic will increase considerably. This is an accident waiting to happen. Keep in mind the recent accident that occurred at DC Airport between a jet and a helicopter, and they had air control. This airport has no air control. Also, somehow, they were allowed to open a north-south runway that's over four thousand feet with no concern or consideration for the residents living at the ends of the new improved runway. That was a grass field. Previous runway was east-west. There is no approved takeoff or landing airspace by the Aviation Administration. They continue to fly about five hundred feet above our homes. Most people do not know how busy were the types of aircraft that fly in and out of this area, or this airport. Types of aircraft using this one runway include small private planes, multiple passenger-type planes, crop seeders, double-winged acrobatic planes, inexperienced pilots from the training school, drones, helicopters, and jets. There are private jets running in and out of there now. And a turboprop plane that we heard earlier will be starting up here soon that does about six parachute jumps every twenty minutes. These pilots continue to jump in front of one another, taking and trying to get their place into landing. It's just a matter of time before there's another accident that results in a death that was there last year when they had an accident. That plane that took off went left, crashed in a field. Had he gone right, could have been my house, one of these neighbors here, and I wouldn't be here speaking. Please be considerate of my family, neighbors, and lives now before you're hearing about our deaths on the news. You don't live there. I mean, there's a lot of air traffic, a lot of noise, and when we complain to the airport, it falls on deaf ears. They don't care. He doesn't care how they operate, he doesn't care how the parachute plane operator works. And they all try to hit that runway probably in less than a quarter mile. If you got that jet coming in, he's coming in from two miles or better out, straight. So in that time, there are other planes that are cutting in front of him. It's just a disaster waiting to happen. And it's only going to get worse if we allow them to bring more planes in. Thank you.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address and property number, please.
Good evening. My name is Ellen Shinelli. I live at seventeen oh four Park Beach Drive in Perryman. I'm testifying in opposition to the proposed upzoning of parcel F dash zero zero two in District F from agricultural and business to commercial industrial. This application would convert over fifty acres of primarily rural land to a more intensive industrial use in an area that already lacks appropriate infrastructure. This sets a concerning precedent, especially when nearby areas like Perryman have long carried a disproportionate share of industrial development. I am also requesting that the county council amend the bill to rezone the Mitchell Farm and adjacent light industrial parcels in Perryman to agriculture. This change would reflect actual land use, reduce infrastructure strain, and promote more consistent balanced planning throughout District F. I am a veterinarian, a local business owner, and the president of Four P Perryman Peninsula Preservation Project. I am also a lifelong advocate for the health of the Chesapeake Bay and the ecosystems that feed it. I stand here tonight not only to speak against harmful zoning, but to speak for a vision, a vision of the Mitchell, the Mitchell Farm not as a future warehouse site, but as something far more lasting, a public park, a guardian of the Bush River, a living classroom for the next generation. As a veterinarian, I understand how fragile ecosystems are and how interconnected health truly is. When we protect the land, the water, and the species around us, we are also protecting ourselves. As a business owner, I believe in growth, but not at any cost, not at the expense of community health, natural heritage, and the future we owe our children. The Mitchell Farm sits at the edge of a major aquifer recharge zone and the headwaters of the Bush River. To pave this land is to harm the very water that feeds our families, our wildlife, and our bay. I urge you to amend this bill, rezone the Mitchell Farm and surrounding properties to agricultural. Let's be the generation that preserved this place, not one that buried it. As we approach Earth Day, a global event dedicated to promoting environmental awareness and action, an event promoted by Hartford County and County Executive Bob Cassely, I leave you with this quote. "The earth is what we all have in common. Let's choose preservation over destruction."
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Sarah Gonzalez, followed by Janine Lacour, followed by Greg Lacour.
Please turn that off.
You okay, Scott?
Hello, my name is Sarah Gonzalez. I live at sixteen thirty-six Perryman Road in Aberdeen, and I'm here to speak in opposition to the proposed upzoning of parcel F dash zero zero two from agriculture and business to commercial industrial. I am also requesting that council amend the bill to rezone the Mitchell Farm and the adjacent light industrial parcels in Perryman to agriculture. I'm a geospatial analyst, engineer, and resident of Perryman, and my property is adjacent to the Mitchell Farm, and I was proud to be a named plaintiff in the Three P nuisance lawsuit, because I think that when there's something wrong, you don't sit back, you act. We purchased our home in Perryman a few years ago at a very high, at a very high investment, because we believed in the promise of this place. We believe in community, we believe in the quiet, the access to nature, and the balance of rural and professional proximity. I believed I was investing in a neighborhood and not an industrial corridor. And now that investment, along with the well-being of our neighbors, is being threatened by a zoning legacy that no longer makes any sense. As a geospatial engineer, I know what it looks like on a map when land use gets out of alignment. I also know what it looks like in real life, the trucks, the noise, the runoff, the risk. It's not just about inconvenience, it's about incompatible zoning at the expense of actual human lives and the property owners who bought here in good faith. And after almost nineteen years in the military, my husband and I chose this place to call home, to settle, and to raise our children. So I urge you all to vote to amend the bill, to rezone the Mitchell Farm and the surrounding Perryman parcels to agriculture. This land has been fought, farmed, and fought for for centuries, and it deserves to remain a buffer, not a barrier. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address and property number, please.
Janine Lacour, eighteen twenty Park Beach Drive, and that's in Perryman. I'm testifying in opposition to the proposed upzoning of parcel F zero zero two in District F from agricultural to and business to commercial industrial. This application would convert over fifty acres of primarily rural land to a more intensive industrial use in an area that already lacks appropriate infrastructure and is surrounded by ag-zoned land, essentially creating commercial industrial in the middle of a doughnut. This is not only concerning, but is reflective of historical patterns of rezoning and upzoning while failing to ensure the existence of adequate infrastructure. It's plopping commercial industrial in the middle of ag-based and residential-shaped doughnut, with the eventual commercial industrial zoning creep that overtakes the whole doughnut itself. It's also inconsistent with the Hartford Next Master Plan of 2016, which I understand will not be updated until 2027. The 2016 plan seeks to promote historical and cultural resources, establish Hartford County as a blue zone community where people live measurably longer, healthier, and happier lives, and developing a green infrastructure plan to identify an interconnected ecologically sensitive system to support the migration of native plant and animal species while focusing restoration efforts to help improve air and water quality. The upzoning currently under consideration is concerning when nearby areas like Perryman have experienced negative and harmful impacts of upzoning amid ag and residential areas. Additionally, blue zone communities will not occur for communities such as those within District F, which have long carried a disproportionate share of industrial development and have higher rates of serious health conditions. Additionally, I'm also requesting the county council to amend the bill to rezone the Mitchell Farm and adjacent light industrial parcels in Perryman to ag. This change would reflect, reflect actual land use, reduce infrastructure strain, and promote more consistent balanced planning throughout District F. I've studied the history of District F, Perryman. I've read the plans, the promises, the proposals, and all I see is over three decades of unfulfilled promises. Water source studies that were never updated, infrastructure improvements that were never built, roads that remain on paper but not on pavement. And yet, with all these unfulfilled obligations, the people of District F, and specifically Perryman, are still being asked to bear more, to, to carry more warehouses, more trucks, more noise, more burden.
Please bring your comments to a close, ma'am.
It's unwise, and it's unsustainable. Thank you.
Good evening, sir. Name and address and property number, please.
Greg Lacour, eighteen twenty Park Beach Drive in Perryman. I'm going to try making it quick since she went over by a couple seconds there.
Thanks, Greg.
You got it. I'm going to be going on the same theme here, speaking on opposition to the proposed upzoning of the parcel F dash zero zero two in District F. Instead of going through this speech, I'm just going to make just a comment. I've been coming here for over three years now, trying to fight some of this development going on in our area, and now I see that there's a new group of people that have come out, and I, I just wish you the best. You got to stick to it. Perryman has. We've looked after this area because of just the wildlife. If anybody knows me on Facebook, I love taking photos of the eagles. There's eagles out there, there is herons out there. I'm just going to let you know, just this past year, and just over the last couple of months, we have a nest that we thought was eggs up there. It was disturbed by people tearing down trees, and it was just a couple trees. But there's just one nest and a couple eggs. They didn't make it. So this year is the first year out of six that we're not going to have new eagles coming into this area. This is something that we've got to protect. The theme here tonight has been the same, okay? It's safety. It's water quality. It is living a good life. What I do in my retirement time is that I help people that are in need of food. I run a nice food ministry, but I just want to let you know, the people that are in need mostly are from my area along that Route Forty corridor. Why do we always pick on these people from the Route Forty corridor to have this overburdening? I'm just asking you to look at this, and people said, you know, look at the zoning of the Mitchell property. It's agricultural, it's got roads that are never going to be built. Please just look at that for me. Thank you. I got at least a minute left.
Thank you, sir.
Beth Pejoli, followed by Ken Shannon and Beau Jarrett.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address and property number, please.
Hi, Beth Pejoli, twenty-seven forty Green Road, Baldwin, Maryland two ten thirteen. I oppose the change in zoning for application B zero zero five. Thank you for the opportunity to provide input. I'm grateful to, for the work done by the current Planning Advisory Board and the Department of Planning and Zoning. They have made this process accessible and transparent. I appreciate the county executive's conservative approach to growth, sending over only a small number of properties recommended for a change in zoning. I oppose the change of the issue for B zero zero five, the Thomas Sawmill, at the corner of Pleasantville and Mountain Roads. After much due diligence, I want to offer a brief history of the parcel. Back in 2017, the current B one zoning was one point two, the current B one zoning was one point two nine five acres. During the 2017 comprehensive zoning review, a request was made by the owner to increase the B one zoning by five point four eight acres. This request was not recommended for change by County Executive Glassman. However, during the amendment phase, Councilman Woods, via email, because he was absent for most of that year, requested point seven five acres to be upzoned to B one. That amendment passed, and currently, the Sawmill has a total of two point five oh five acres of B one zoning out of the forty-eight acre parcel. Now, in 2025, the owners have requested an additional one point nine seven acres of B one zoning. If approved, that would be a total of four point oh two acres of B one zoning in the middle of Fawston, a quiet agricultural residential community. My concern is the pattern of expansion of a business use outside the development envelope that is in contradiction to the Hartford County Master Land Use Plan. I agree with the Planning Advisory Board as stated, quote, "For issue B zero zero five, the PAB voted five to zero in favor of retaining the properties existing B one RR zoning." Our vote is, still quoting, "Our vote is largely reflective of our understanding that approval of the applicant's requests for additional B one zoning would not remedy the existing non-conforming use issue, as sawmills are not permitted in B one zoning. It is my understanding that the property owners wish to diversify and expand agricultural products, et cetera. I propose that they can do that now with the existing B one zoning and large rural residential acreage. There are options here. The Fawston community would embrace an expanded agricultural enterprise. I ask that we pause and reevaluate. Continuing to expand more intense uses outside the development envelope does not make sense. It's a slippery slope. I respectfully request this application be amended to no change." Thank you.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please, and property number.
Ken Shannon. I live at two zero four four Park Beach Drive in Perryman, and I'm testifying in relation to parcel F zero zero two. I'm opposed to the upzoning of that parcel in District F from ag to B one, from ag and B one to CI. This property is surrounded by a community zone for agricultural use, making CI zoning incompatible. It would set a precedent that fundamentally misaligns with the Cresswell community's character. This rezoning request appears speculative and aimed at positioning the property for future industrial development. Approving CI zoning for F zero zero two would disregard the infrastructural limitations and the established rural identity of the surrounding community. Similarly, I am also requesting that the county council amend the bill to rezone the Mitchell Farm Mitchell Farm and adjacent LI parcels in Perriman to ag. This change would reflect actual land use, reduce infrastructure strain, and promote more consistent, balanced planning throughout District F. I've spent a large part of my professional life working in data analysis and systems evaluation. I've reviewed the numbers, and I'd like to share what they show: not opinions, not emotions, facts. Perriman has more warehouse square footage per person than any other community in Hartford County, twenty times more. We also have the highest poverty rate among those communities, and a non-white population 25% higher than the county average. We don't have a rec center. We don't have sidewalks on Spisucha Road. This is not balanced planning. This is institutional overburdening, and it's happening at the expense of a community that's already underserved. I didn't find out about the plan to put mega warehouses on the Mitchell Farm from my councilman but from one of my neighbors. That same councilman had previously introduced legislation to make the Mitchell Farm an enterprise zone. Although I was living in Perriman at the time and am less than a mile from the EZ and would need to go through it every time I entered or left Perriman Peninsula, I was never advised about this totally inappropriate enterprise zone. For decades, the District F council member and county executive have served developers instead of constituents. There was no transparency as they quietly turned Perriman into a dumping ground for industrial development. We are now fortunate to have Jacob Bennett and Bob Cassely listening to Perriman's issues and working to support our needs. There are already 10 million square feet of warehouses, an electrical substation, and a waste treatment center on the other side of the railroad tracks that bisects Perriman Peninsula. That is enough. The Mitchell Farm sits in the middle of homes in a rural area and should not be a site for industrial development. It is a textbook example of a donut hole of the type that planning and zoning typically deals with administratively as a zoning issue. I urge you to amend this bill, rezone the Mitchell Farm and the surrounding parcels to agricultural, not just to correct the map but to correct the inequity. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir. Name and address and property number, please.
Good evening. Beau Jarrett, 7 Shatlon Hill Road, Owings Mills, Maryland. I'm here to speak on D-011. I'm here to ask the council to support my rezoning application, D-011. I'm in the process of selling the land to the Jarrettsville Lions Club, which will ultimately benefit the entire community. However, if the Lions Club is unable to raise the necessary funds to purchase all 38 acres, we need equal zoning setbacks to those of my neighboring properties. This will provide flexibility to keep the Lions Club in its current desired location. The Lions Club is able to buy the entire farm. My zoning request is a moot point and not needed. Last fall, I was candid at a Lions Club board meeting stating if they could find another location, it would resolve my challenges with the land. However, that is not a realistic option given our shared goal of keeping the Lions Club where it is. While I invited them to be here with me tonight, they prefer to remain apolitical, a decision I respect even if I don't fully understand it. What we do agree on is relocating the Lions Club would significantly harm, if not cripple, their ability to raise money in the community. No one wants that, nor do we want to displace the beloved Sunflower Festival. I want to work with the council to find a solution that benefits everyone, but I need your support. When I contacted Shane Grimm's office at Hartford County Planning and Zoning, I asked why my neighboring properties have more than doubled his VB-zone depth than I do. He couldn't provide an answer because those boundaries were drawn long ago. However, he confirmed that the land use map serves only as a guideline for zoning decisions, not a fixed boundary, which is why I would want to address two errors in my application's comprehensive zoning assessment report. Page two incorrectly describes the land use adjacent to my property. It fails to mention CA Grimble Paving and Excavating Company as a VB-zone property and only refers to Grimble Farm LLC as a 129-acre farm further north. Page three, section six, states that my application is inconsistent with the land use map. This is misleading since the map is a guideline, not an unchangeable boundary. My VB-zoning depth can be adjusted if the council approves it. I'm simply asking for the same zoning depth as my neighbors, nothing more. I believe the council values fairness and impartiality for all constituents. This is a reasonable request, and I appreciate your attention and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Jermaine Stanley, followed by Stephanie Flash, followed by Beth Shear.
Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record, please, plus the property that you're speaking to.
Good evening. My name is Jermaine Stanley, and I live at 2010 Park Beach Drive, Perriman, Aberdeen. I'm here to provide public comment on Bill 25002, Hartford County's 2025 comprehensive zoning legislation. Specifically, I'm testifying in opposition to the proposed upzoning of parcel F-002 in District F from agriculture and business to commercial industrial. This application would convert over fifty acres of primary rural land to a more intensive industrial use in an area that already lacks appropriate infrastructure. This sets a concerning precedent, especially when nearby areas like Perriman have long carried a disproportionate share of industrial development. I'm also requesting the county council amend the bill to rezone the Mitchell Farm and adjacent light industrial parcels in Perriman to agriculture or agricultural. This change would reflect actual land use, reduce infrastructure strain, and promote more consistent balanced planning throughout District F. I moved to Perriman more than four years ago, about five years ago, with my wife Jenna. I'm a tech leader in the cybersecurity industry. We moved here from the Montgomery County region, which is the greater Washington DC area, looking for a quieter and more grounded place to live. What we found was surprised, what has surprised us, not in a good way, despite paying significant taxes that are on par with Montgomery County. The taxes, the level of service, investment, and infrastructure impairment is shockingly low. Roads are worn down, as you've heard, no shoulders, flooding is frequent, and the community feels forgotten. Now, I'm a tech leader who has sat on several international tech boards, nonprofits, I've led, large tech nonprofit in greater Washington DC, and I understand the importance of listening to your members or your constituents. And I urge you to amend this bill, county council, and rezone the Mitchell Farm and surrounding parcels to agricultural. Show the residents who are investing in this community, like you've heard from us all this evening, that the county is willing to invest too, not just concrete and tax revenue, but in livability, stability, and long-term vision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please, and property number.
Yes, good evening. My name is Stephanie Flash, 1902 Norwood Court of Fallston. I am speaking tonight on behalf of Friends of Harvard, so I will go through quickly ten parcels in which we oppose the upzoning or change in zoning. As I said, I'm here tonight on behalf of Friends of Harvard.
Can I have the numbers first, please?
A-7 through A-10, B-1, B-4, B-5, D-18, E-5, and E-6.
Thank you.
So I just want to make sure that we highlight some of the concerns and make sure that the community's voice is heard on the decisions that will shape the future of Hartford County. So A-7 through A-10, the one referencing Paul's Lane, these properties are near residential neighborhoods and are accessed by narrow roads like Route 7 and Paul's Lane. Rezoning to the general industrial would permit intense and potentially hazardous uses that may impact surrounding communities and road conditions. So we do ask that you deny GI and retain its CI current zoning. B-1, Hartford Road and Route 147, there are two parcels that are vacant and all are located near an intersection leading to the Benson Field Park and Annie's Playground, an area that is already experiencing increased traffic, and the Benson Field Park is a new park that we have just established. Although within the development envelope, these parcels should serve as a transition from residential to higher intensity, the Route 1 corridor, and buffer those communities, manage the traffic, and protect the safety and quality of life that those residents deserve. So we please deny B-3 zoning and retain the B-2 zoning that they already have. B-04, Mountain Road Deli, and B-05, Frank Thomas Sawmill, both properties are located outside the development envelope and beyond public water and sewer service in rural residential areas. B-4 was only established as B-1 to support a small community-serving deli. B-5 does have the existing sawmill, which we already have mentioned that it represents a use that's not permitted on B-1 and could be permitted on agricultural zoning. Upzoning either of those properties would allow more intense use that conflict with the intended character of the surrounding agricultural and residential uses, so please deny both of those upzonings. D-18, Aldina Road, this parcel is located in the rural and agricultural area, and although only a portion of the property is proposed for upzoning, the current zoning supports agricultural preservation and helps prevent commercial creep into areas not designed for growth. Please deny the zoning change. E-5 and E-6 on Churchville Road, the town of Bel Air opposed these requests citing inconsistency with the surrounding residential zoning, and nearby neighbors and businesses shared those concerns in past meetings and public hearings. The current B-1 zoning allows for neighborhood-scale office and retail that fits that community, so we please ask that you deny the upzoning so they can retain their B-1 zoning that they already have. We urge the county council to evaluate each request through the lens of long-term community impact and not just the individual properties or development envelope boundaries. Hartford County's strength lies in its mix of communities, farms, redevelopment opportunities, and open space, and we must protect that balance.
Please bring your comments to a close. Thank you.
Beth Shear, followed by Jeff Beck and Kenya Harris.
Good evening. Name and address, please, and property number.
Good evening. Beth Shear, 2814 Cross Country Court in Fallston, Maryland. I am opposed to any change to the zoning of B-004, B-005, and B-001. In the cases of B-004 and 005, this following assessment has already occurred by the Hartford County Planning and Zoning Department. These requested upzonings are inconsistent with the Hartford County Land Use Plan, Hartford Next, the guide in place to direct responsible planning for the county. These properties are outside water and sewer service area without programmed or planned future service, and these properties are outside the development envelope. Additionally, as it relates to B-004, it lies adjacent to, it is already a commercial property that lies adjacent to all ag-zoned property with homes on them. There's nothing else there. That owner has been operating as a non-conforming use by choice for many, many years. B-005 has already been discussed. B-005 received already an expansion of its B-1-zoned area in the last comprehensive rezoning. These folks, as Mr. and Ms. Pejoli mentioned, can do a multitude of things that they want to do, and we'd love to support that on the current property as it is owned. In general, there should never be an expectation from any individual property owner that there can be a modification of a county law to create something other than what they purchased and agreed to by signing a deed to a property and then filing that deed. That is, we have gotten into a habit of asking for forgiveness versus permission. This should not be expected to happen by way of a special exception or an upzoning in an area where it has been determined to be counter to the majority of parameters in place that guide the zoning of a property of that area and any surrounding area. This brings me to B-001. The zoning on this property is already fairly intense. It's a fairly intense business use. It wants to be more intense. Its boundaries are surrounded largely by residential use and small residential business use. The impact to the greater community of increasing this zoning will create impacts well beyond the adjacent residential property by causing local road infrastructure changes that will be far-reaching and impact more residential property. What you do now matters later, and the perfect example is what Mr. Rigdon brought up in his discussion, the Dunkin' Donuts in Jarrettsville. He used as an example is why his property should be upzoned. The Dunkin' Donuts in Jarrettsville was not originally zoned for its use. It was a bank with a drive-thru that got a special exception to be a Dunkin' in an area where it wasn't necessarily allowed.
Please bring your comments to a close.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Beck, followed by Kenya Harris.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please, and property number.
Jeff Beck, 102 Shell Road in Joppa, Maryland, District A, speaking to applications A-002, 005, 013, 016, and 017. Council President, esteemed council persons, I stand before you this evening as a resident of District A in Hartford County in opposition of the following zoning requests for 2, 5, 13, 16, and 17 in District A. All five are currently zoned R-1. Four of them are requesting upzoning to R-4, A-5 the exception requesting R-2. When we see the R-4 zoning designation, we know that means that high-density housing is coming. Four of these applications are at the intersection of Joppa Farm Road and Philadelphia Road, which is an already treacherous intersection. Allowing for high-density housing in this location without first having a comprehensive and intense corrections made to the infrastructure is a recipe for disaster. Similarly, A-002 is currently a small mobile home park off of a stretch of Trimble Road that has several sharp curves, no shoulder, and no sidewalk. Neither of these locations are suitable for high-density housing and the large increase in traffic that we all know would follow close behind. Additionally, each of these properties are fully surrounded by R-1. As per zoning director Grimm's report, the requested upzoning for each of these properties is inconsistent with their surroundings, would require significant infrastructure enhancements for roadways as well as for water and sewer service, and would likely contribute to an increased burden for our school system, which is already overburdened as we know. As such, I urge you to follow the recommendation of the planning and zoning director as well as the Planning Advisory Board, and stick with no change for these applicants. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Kenya Harris, followed by Dagmore Sacks and Georgie Elwood.
Ms. Harris? Call your next speaker.
Dagmore Sacks, followed by Georgie Elwood.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please, and property number.
Thank you. I'm Dagmore Sacks, and I live at 1808 Park Beach Drive, Perriman Peninsula in Aberdeen. I am speaking tonight specifically to testify my opposition to the proposed upzoning of parcel F-002 in District F from ag, A-G, and business 1 to commercial industrial. We've seen what can already happen with this. This application is going to be pushing industrial expansion into areas that simply cannot handle it. The roads on our side of 95 are falling apart. The GPS routes don't work. Truckers don't use trucker GPS. They use car GPS, and it puts them on roads they don't belong on, okay? Residents like me and a number you've already heard from are paying the price of this. While I'm at it, I'm also going to request that the council amend the bill to rezone the Mitchell Farm and the nearby light industrial parcels back to agriculture. That land had no business being zoned industrial, and we continue to treat it in a way that is both reckless and insulting to those of us who live here, not just the humans, that includes the animals and the eagles. I'm angry, and I'm not sugarcoating it. Just three weeks ago, an 18-wheeler took out my mailbox at nine o'clock at night. Our road is barely one car width wide, and at nine o'clock I was eating dinner, and I saw an 18-wheeler go by my house, and he couldn't make the turn. So Chuck Mizan had to help him back down the road three-quarters of a mile, backing an 18-wheeler down a single country road with no lights, no sidewalks, and no curves, and he backed into my mailbox twice. I don't think any of you have ever had to deal with that. It's no fun. Just two and a half weeks prior to that, an 18-wheeler got stuck on Canning House Drive. That's our way in and out of the neighborhood. It completely blocked the road for 18 hours. They had to turn on their night lights in the evening, so no one ran into them because, again, we don't have sidewalks, we don't have streetlights. We have one-lane roads in and out, okay? What would have happened if we would have needed an ambulance? What if a fire truck needed to come back there? Some of us are lucky. We actually live on the water and could have gotten out by boat, but not that night. I don't want excuses. I don't want excuses. I want accountability, and I want safety. And I would appreciate the council to stop dumping industrial growth and problems into neighborhoods that were never built to handle it. Rezone the Mitchell Farm, please, to agriculture. Shut the door on more chaos and send a message that Perriman is not your dumping ground. Thank you.
Good evening, ma'am. Can you reach that mic okay?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, he's going to adjust it for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I have your name and address, please, and the property you're speaking to?
My name is Georgie Elwood. I live at thirty-eight twenty-two Belmont Drive in Jarrettsville, Maryland, and I'm talking about D dash oh eleven. This is the first time I've done this, so please be patient with me.
Take your time, ma'am.
One, it's the flowers I would miss, but second, we're a small community. We already have heavy traffic, and for that to be approved, it would make it a lot worse. I did listen to the gentleman. I wasn't aware that they were trying to purchase it, meaning... But I would appreciate it if you would consider it. We're a small town. Please don't approve it. We need it to stay as it is, agriculture. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Nicole McGuire, followed by Catty Mead and Mary Bellent.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please?
Nicole McGuire, thirteen fifteen Imaeus Court, Joppa. I am here to oppose the rezoning of A zero one two, parcel fifty-nine. I am a member of Clayton Vista Homeowners Association, and we oppose the rezoning of the lot on the corner of Clayton Road and Philadelphia Road for several reasons. Number one, this is a residential area, which means we have schoolchildren of all ages outside playing, enjoying the neighborhood. There is already a speeding issue that we are fighting by constantly posting speed limit signs and children at play signs. The school bus stop is directly across from the proposed entrance to the wanted business. Res zoning the area will add to the risk for our children. Two, that corner is a known location for traffic accidents. Because that strip of Philadelphia Road is an I ninety-five detour for construction and accidents, there is always a heavy flow of traffic. Clayton Road is also a detour for ongoing construction on one fifty-two. There is no traffic light at the intersection of Clayton Road and Philadelphia Road. Because of this, when there are issues on one fifty-two or I ninety-five, accidents always occur. Res zoning this corner will add more traffic issues to the intersection. Number three, Clayton Road cannot withstand excessive traffic. The materials Clayton used, excuse me, the materials Clayton Road is made of are for low-traffic areas. The rezoning the area will cause major damage to the roads. And number four, the most compelling reason for the opposition is there are already vacant buildings on nearby Pulaski Highway that are available. Using buildings that are already zoned as B three parcels will add to the community without taking away the beauty of the area and causing risk to our citizens and community. So in all, please agree with the board members and vote no on A zero one two. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please, and property number?
Hi, my name is Katie Mead, and my address is fourteen thirteen My Ladies Drive in Abingdon, Maryland. And I'm here, also my first time doing, speaking about this, but regarding F zero zero one. It's a seventy-seven acre farm. We've been here thirty years, and it's been a seventy-acre farm behind our property that they're trying to change into a townhouse, a townhouse development. And it's in the middle. There's a flood zone. It's historical property, the Bush Declaration. It's a major flood zone A E. We've always been told it couldn't be built along. It's on the corner, it's on the corner between Calvary Road and Route Seven. So there's also no sidewalks, no shoulders. So in terms of bringing in seventy-seven acres' worth of townhouses, that's a lot of a lot of people coming in, and it's not set up yet for it. We've had flooding besides through the farm, but that whole Route Seven has been closed down multiple times because of the flooding, you know, each year. It was a little better last year because they did a little bit of correction on Route Seven. But it's been, it's been a lot, you know, a lot. It's, I think the, it's not, it's not on the master, the county's master plan, this thing. And I'm also concerned about it being like, is it going to be accessible from ninety-five? Are they going to create a new exit? Or is it going to come from Exit Eighty and come down into that neighborhood? Or, you know, is it going to be accessible from the dead end, from our currently dead-end street up to the farmland and therefore having, like, Valley Forge is dead ends right into that. And then, so are they going to come off of ninety-five and come through our neighborhood and the whole stop-the-iron-pipeline piece of things as well? It's another concern. So the number of housing, the number of people, it's also Amerton Rec. and Bell Camp Rec.'s development so far is not, and it's not meant to support that at this point. So that's all I have. I just hope you will choose against F zero zero one.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please, and applicant number?
Good evening. My name is Mary Bellent. I live at thirty-three thirty-two Cool Branch Road in Churchville, and I'm speaking to you tonight in opposition of D zero one eight. This is my first time here. I'm twenty-one years old, and I am making ninety percent of this up on the fly, so bear with me. My great-grandfather, Larson Serre, moved to Hartford County in nineteen sixty and purchased six hundred acres called Waffle Hill Farm out in Churchville. And my great-grandfather, William McGurk, moved to Merrily Farm in nineteen forty-one. So we have been here for a very, very long time. And I want to come to you guys tonight and ask you, what kind of message are we sending farmers with this constant rezoning of agriculture? These people have been here first. These people have been here for decades. What message are we sending to the people that put the food on your plate? That's what I want to ask you guys tonight. I want to know where it's going to end. What is your vision for Hartford County? Do you want these farmers here for the next hundred years? Or do you want it to turn into Towson or Baltimore City? What do you want for Hartford County? The appeal of Hartford County is the agriculture, its lands, its streams, its creeks. It's why my family planted their roots here, and look what it's turning into. I want to point out that every time we lose an acre of farmland, so does our security in healthy food and responsibly ethically farmed land. Seventy-five percent or more of the money that you spend with a small farmer recirculates in the community seven times or more, comparable to fifteen percent at the supermarket. I ask you guys to bear in mind when voting on these bills, the people who have been here first, the people who feed you, the people who put food on your plate. Tonight, when you go home, if you're going to eat dinner, tomorrow morning, when you wake up and eat breakfast, thank a farmer. These people are the reason you have food. These people are the reason we are here. Please bear them in mind when voting for these bills. Thank you for your time.
You sound like your grandfather up there.
Oh, yeah? I appreciate the compliment. Thank you for your time.
Scott Stribinger.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please, and applicant number?
Scott Stribinger, eighteen Vista View Court, Kingsville, Maryland. The issue is B zero zero three, address thirty ninety-five Bel Air Road. One, I very much respect farmers and farming land. This particular piece of ground is right on Route One, a commercial corridor. We had special exceptions, I guess, about thirty years ago. That's why there's a golf driving range, a miniature golf course, construction services there through all the special exceptions. About thirty years ago, Kraus was doing a straightening and aligning of Route One in Perry Hall, and there was all kinds of rock, and because of the property I have, you couldn't farm it if you had to. It's nothing but rock and garbage ground, so it isn't like I upset any kind of farmland. So they trucked out, I don't know, about thirty thousand loads of primarily rock and dirt because it was garbage ground. The state wanted me to go along with Kraus, and so did Hartford County, and they made it quite clear. It's a commercial corridor. They're fine with my intent. The only reason I didn't pursue upgrading the zoning a long time ago, I had some health issues, and it kind of threw me out of the saddle, so I'm back in the saddle. Plus, some of my family members want to get more involved in things, so that's why I'm seeking an upgrading on the zoning. There again, it's a commercial corridor. It's garbage ground. It's rock up the gizou. If you ever traveled down Route One, so you know where it is, it's where the golf driving range is and the miniature golf facility, and we have construction storage. All these special exceptions happened many, many years ago, but I haven't been able to stay up on things, but I'm semi-back in the saddle working on this. So all I ask is your consideration, use a little common sense. I'm not upsetting an apple cart. Everybody I know in that area has no problem with changing the zoning. That's it.
Thank you, sir.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
First of all, let me thank all of you for your patience this evening. We were able to get through forty-five speakers in a relatively short amount of time because of your participation. Shane, Matt, Alex, want to thank you as always. Anything you want to add before we go?
No, I just thank you. Thank you for your consideration, and I'm happy that this will be my last comprehensive resort.
With that, we will conclude this public hearing for Bill twenty-five. How you like that? I forgot we have one next week, too. We had so much fun tonight. We're going to be having you guys back on the eighth. So yes, it'll conclude the public hearing for this evening. We'll return on the eighth. Thank you, and we're going to take a short recess. Chair calls to order legislative session day twenty-five dash zero one one. I would ask you to please stand for the pledge, followed by the upnun prayer by Councilmember Jan Duranda.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come before you today asking for your wisdom and guidance as we work to serve our community. Bless our decisions so they may be fair, just, and made with the best interests of all in mind. As we prepare for upcoming budget sessions, help us to be responsible guardians of the resources entrusted to us. We honor and pray for our first responders, those who protect, heal, and serve. Watch over them, strengthen them, and keep them safe. May we lead with unity and a shared commitment to the well-being of our neighbors. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Agenda item number four, presentation of proclamations. Mr. Bennett, would you please step in the well and invite whomever you like? And Mr. Jan Duranda, will you start reading, please?
Where Secretary of Defense Casper Weinberger first designated April as the month of a military child in nineteen eighty-six to recognize the contributions that nearly two million children make as their parents, guardians, and families serve our nations. And whereas Hartford County is home to approximately three thousand military-connected children, with most parents and guardians serving at Aberdeen Proven Ground, military children navigated life of frequent relocations, new schools, extended separations, and deployments, often adapting to the physical and emotional tolls of a parent's military service, all while balancing academic success, personal growth, and ever-changing environments. And whereas U Protected Chesapeake is a community organization based in Hartford County whose goal is to empower military-connected and multilingual learners by creating inclusive events and cultural education opportunities in partnership with Hartford County Public Schools and Aberdeen Proven Ground. U Protected Chesapeake encourages everyone to purple up by wearing the color purple on April fifteenth to show support for military children who are an inspiration and source of pride for a nation because of their strength, adaptability, and resilience. Now, therefore, we, the County Council of Hartford County, Maryland, on this first day of April twenty twenty-five, do proclaim month of the military child, April twenty twenty-five.
Thank you all for being here from Uprooted Chesapeake and for all that you do for the community in supporting so many. I especially want to recognize and celebrate the military children that we have here tonight. Hearing the statistics of over three thousand children in Hartford County that are military children, and obviously, that's always in flux as people come and go. It just really touches upon what a huge impact that is on the community. And I know some of you children personally who came into my classroom and then moved away and then surprisingly came back, even after being in my classroom. And just, you know, in my time as an educator, the families that you fall in love with, and they move on to Louisiana or Georgia or Hawaii, and, you know, you always think, oh, are you ever going to come back? And sometimes they do, and sometimes they don't. Sometimes they do at different times and cross each other. It is a big toll to have to leave a place, to have to leave your family, to have to start over. New friends, new schools, and it's a sacrifice the whole family makes together to help our whole community, and it's something worth celebrating and something worth recognizing. So that's why it's important to us as a county council and a community like Hartford County that we take time to recognize our military children throughout this month. So we get a picture? And I'll invite you to speak, and then if any of our military children would like to speak.
Good evening, members of the county council. My name is Melissa Frasqueri Santiago, and I'm the founder and executive director of Uprooted Chesapeake. And I'm truly honored and grateful to accept this proclamation in recognition of the month of the military child. It is time to celebrate and honor all kids connected to military service, whether they are children of active-duty service members, reserve, veterans, or Gold Star families. These kids often face challenges like frequent moves, long separations from parents, and the emotional weight of their parents' service and sacrifices. By celebrating them, we recognize their strength, resilience, and the unique role they play in supporting our military community. It's a chance to show appreciation for their courage and remind them that their sacrifices are valued no matter what their family situation is. Uprooted Chesapeake's mission is to empower military-connected and English learner students by organizing inclusive educational and cultural events in the community, advocating for the needs of both groups while educating both the school and local community. I would like to take a moment to thank the members of our youth committee that are here in attendance this evening, some who are military kids themselves. These kids join our organization with a shared commitment to serve as mentors dedicated to fostering a sense of belonging and providing guidance to their peers, ensuring that every student feels welcome and supported. Thank you again for the proclamation, and don't forget to wear your purple shirt on April fifteenth in honor of military-connected kids in Hartford County.
Thank you all for coming and seeing us today.
Thank you all for coming and seeing us today. It's really been nice to be, go up here and do all this and have it all work out. So thank you for coming.
I might look young, but that young man was once a kindergartner in my class, so clearly I'm not that young.
Thank you, folks. So Kristy, Sheriff, Colonel, Major. This was unexpected. I had no idea you were leaving until you mentioned it this past week. And we couldn't let you get away from here without recognizing you for the service that you provide, not only to Sheriff and the deputies, but for the service you provide to citizens. On some of our darkest days, you were the voice that the citizens heard. And so we want to recognize you, and I'm going to give the Sheriff an opportunity to say something. I didn't say where you're going, because I know you don't want to, but you can, you can speak to.
I, I will say Kristy is not being fired, because that rumor ran around apparently a little bit. I would be a darn fool to let her go voluntarily. This is her choice to move on to a bigger and, I won't say better, I'm a little biased at the Sheriff's Office, but to bigger things, and more to come on that later. She's been asked not to speak about what the new assignment is, but she's moving on, and as you heard from the Council President, she has seen us through some horrible events. Kristy has been my Director of Media and Community Public Relations for the last ten years. She assumed that job right before I came into office, and I was smart enough not to make a stupid decision and replace her. She stayed in place, and she has been a super invaluable, although we all have to be replaced at some point in time, member of the Command of the Hartford County Sheriff's Office for the last ten years. She actually has a job that her husband once held at the Sheriff's Office, and nothing against Eddie's service, but she was put through some very challenging things that we saw advanced granted, the loss of our deputies in two thousand sixteen, the Rite Aid shooting, the Joppa Town School shooting, even though you did that more remotely, but just so many tragic events that struck our community, and you were how this office responded out in the public. You will be missed, we will move forward, we've been here two hundred and fifty years, but you made this a better place, and I say that's the goal for the employees that I hire. Please leave the Sheriff's Office a better place than what you found it. There is no doubt that this young lady is leaving the Sheriff's Office a better place than what she found it.
You called me young, thank you. I, I know everyone's been here a long time tonight, and I really just want to say, this is so very kind, and I feel like it's totally unnecessary. I like to, to be in the background and make sure that the community has what they need. This job has been one of the greatest honors of my life in serving this community, and it is my sincere promise that when you hear from me again next week, I will be continuing to serve citizens and make sure that we all have a safe place to live. So, thank you, Sheriff, thank you, Majors, Colonel, and Council President, thank you so much.
Be it hereby known that the County Council of Hartford County, Maryland, on this first day of April twenty twenty-five, recognizes and congratulate Kristy Hopkins, Director of Media and Public Relations, Hartford County Sheriff's Office, twelve years of service, and express our appreciation for her dedication, dedicated service to the citizens of Hartford County. We extend our best wishes for her success in all her future endeavors.
I used to do commercials.
You behind, Sheriff? You behind? Agenda item number five, Consideration of Petitions, Applications, Appointments, and Nominations, Executive Appointments. Hartford Center Board of Directors, Mr. Bennett, may I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move to reappoint Victoria Semeney to the Hartford Center Board of Directors.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Giordano. Been moving a second to approve Ms. Semeney to, as a reappoint to the board. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bennett?
I'll just say, it's been great to serve with her already on the Hartford Center Board of Directors. She's a close neighbor of mine, just one block down the road from me, and she's an invaluable resource on the Hartford Center Board, so I'm glad she's able to stay with us.
Great. Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mrs. Robert?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodell?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being six votes in affirmative, one vacant, the appointment is hereby approved. Hartford County Cultural Arts Advisory Board, Ms. Sobbles, may I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve.
Michael Bailey?
Michael Bailey.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley.
No, I'm Mr. Jan Giordano.
It's been moved a second to approve the new appointment of Mr. Bailey. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bennett?
I'd just like to say, his whole family has been such a great resource to our community, with Mr. Bailey serving the community at APG as a civilian employee, and his wife serving in community groups. It's just wonderful that they give so much back to the community.
Thank you, anyone else? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mrs. Robert?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodell?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being six votes in affirmative, one vacant, the appointment is hereby approved. Towing Appeals Board, may I have a motion?
Mr. Jan Giordano? Council President, I move to approve the appointment of Richard Lynch to the Towing Appeals Board.
May I have a second?
Second.
Been moving seconded to approve Mr. Lynch to the Towing Appeals Board. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mrs. Bennett?
Not married to Nalanda.
Good Lord.
Robert?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley? Mr. Riley?
I said aye.
Oh. Mrs. Bull Sodell?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Good Lord, there being six votes in affirmative, one vacant, the appointment is hereby approved. Thank God, special presentations we have none. Seven, Approval of Minutes, Legislative Day twenty-five dash zero, ten, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There being no corrections to the minutes, stand approved. Mr. Jan Giordano, please read Resolution zero zero seven two five, Opposition Maryland House Bill twelve twenty-two into the record.
Resolution zero zero seven dash twenty-five, Opposition Maryland House Bill one two two two, as introduced, introduced by Council President Vincenti and Council Members Jan Giordano, Riley, and Boyle Sodles. A resolution of the County Council of Hartford County to support the Department of Homeland Security, Immigrations, and Customs Enforcement, two eighty-seven G, delegation of authority program, and urge the Maryland Senate to vote against HB one two two two.
Thank you. Sheriff, would you like to come forward, bring anyone with you, sit front, up front, sir?
Good evening again. I want to say thank you for the resolution, and I'm hopeful for a successful vote. This week, the eyes of our nation are focused on, here in Hartford County, where the murder trial of Rachel Morden's killer is moving forward. We have to look no further than Rachel's case, or the case of young Kayla Hampton, to understand the tragic impact of ignoring our nation's immigration laws. These two innocent Hartford County women were senselessly, senselessly murdered by Hartford County, by criminal illegal immigrants here in Hartford County. As some of you are already aware, the two eighty-seven G program is a public safety initiative that was created by President Bill Clinton in the nineteen nineties. Our office was accepted into the program by President Obama, who expanded this important immigration enforcement partnership. We were one of thirty-three agencies added by President Obama. To be clear, our two eighty-seven G program deals only with individuals who have committed crimes in our communities, who are arrested for those crimes, and then booked in to our detention center. Although there are some who seek to distract from this partnership, claiming it to be a law enforcement program, it is not. In Maryland, there is only the correctional-based program, and it in no way involves law enforcement. Claims to the contrary are either those who are uneducated or misinformed on the issue, or those who wish to sell a different narrative. We have now worked hand in hand with each presidential administration over roughly the past decade to remove criminal offenders who are in our country illegally, and who, according to our federal partners, pose a threat to public safety and/or national security. During this time, we have identified and removed hundreds of criminal illegal immigrants from our county, here in Hartford County. We need to not allow ourselves to be distracted by those who feign outrage based on who was in the White House. To protect our communities, we must be allowed to work with our local, state, and federal partners, all of our federal partners. This is something that every presidential administration has understood related to immigration since President Clinton, and recognizing this is simply Public Safety one oh one. This resolution demonstrates that this county and this council truly stands with the seventy-six percent of Marylanders, including sixty-five percent of Democrats, who want enforcement of our immigration laws, and who truly care about the safety of our families and communities. And with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Robey to touch a little bit on where this bill stands currently in Annapolis.
Thank you, Sheriff. For the record, Eric Robey, Director of Legislative Affairs for the Hartford County Sheriff's Office. So just to give you a little background, HB twelve twenty-two was put in this session. It has passed the Maryland House of Delegates, and it has moved over to the Senate. So anytime you have a bill in Annapolis, to give you your bill lesson, it's got to pass both chambers. It's already passed the House, it's crossed to the Senate, it's had its hearing in the Senate last week, and we're still waiting to see the Senate Judicial Proceedings Committees, where the bill, the committee that heard the bill and heard the testimony, we're still waiting for them to decide whether they're going to vote the bill or not vote the bill, so it's still in committee. We did have the Maryland Sheriff's Association that has taken a position in full support of this, and this bill does have local impact, and that's why I think this resolution is so important, because there are three programs in the state of Maryland that have current two eighty-seven G programs. That's us here in Hartford. Sheriff mentioned, we entered about eight years ago, under President Obama. We have Frederick County, which is the longest-serving two eighty-seven G program in the country, and then we have Cecil County. There's also an additional, three additional counties that have submitted applications, and they'll be doing a program involved with two eighty-seven G, it's just a step down of that, it's called the Warrant Service Officer Program. But this bill certainly would affect local, you know, us locally here in Hartford County, because if it were enacted by the Senate, passed by the Senate, signed by the governor, it would essentially terminate the two eighty-seven G program here in Hartford County, and we would have to get rid of our, our agreement with our federal partners. Council President Vincenti, I want to thank you for, for your support on this, for putting the resolution in, and the council members who, who sponsored this. We'll be happy to take any questions.
As well as joining us, Council President, for joining us, and Maryland sheriffs from all over the state in Annapolis to speak out about this bill.
Now, I, I was honored to be a part of it, from the aspect that we believe that we have the best public safety here in the county, we want to do everything to make sure that you have all the tools necessary to keep all the citizens safe throughout the county. So if you ever need me for anything, I'll always be there. Council at this time, I'm assuming you're finished?
Yes.
Yes. Council at this time, any questions, Mr. Jan Giordano?
I, I don't have any questions. I, I do have, just thank you for the, all the information about when it started, to let the public know that Clinton started it, Obama put it in force, and we've been, I know on this council, I know we've talked about it since, since the beginning. But more importantly, too, is that my girlfriend's from South America, she strongly supports this. She was worried after the death of Rachel Morden, she did not want to go out, did not want to go on the trail. I've heard her talk to many people, Spanish people, and their concern is to come here to be safe. You know, if somebody commits a crime after that, that, you know, that, that they look at their status and they, they shouldn't be here. So her concern, you, you hear that from her, she talks to a lot of people, and I hear what they say. You know, a lot of people come here because they, they want to feel safe, they want to be safe. So I think it's really important, and I appreciate it. I reached out to you when I heard about this, and, and definitely, I didn't know there was something working, so I, I certainly appreciate that, and I'm glad to support this wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, you did, and you offered all your support, and you touched on one thing in there that I think is important, that this program in no way removes everybody that we encounter. In fact, it's something like thirty-five percent, roughly, that ICE decides to take no action on. So again, you have people who are violating our laws, who are, have already entered the country illegally, or over state of ease, or done something else, and still, ICE is taking no action on roughly thirty-five percent. So those people, again, don't pose a threat in ICE's determination to public safety and/or national security, and they are released once local charges are satisfied.
Mr. Bennett?
Hello. Good evening, and thank you for taking my phone call this past weekend, and for talking with me. I've been taking a lot of time to learn about this, because it's really just not something I've even ever thought about before hearing about the resolution. And I've gone through, and I've read, and listened to the public testimony that was shared for the bill in Annapolis, and I had noticed that there were a lot of law enforcement groups and agencies that had spoken in favor of the legislation that the resolution's against. And I was hoping, because you know more than I do as far as the world of law enforcement, if I could share some of the quotes from the, and points from the testimony of those groups, and if maybe you could help me understand your perspective on those quotes.
Sure.
So just to name some of the groups for context, you know, the Law Enforcement Action Partnership, the Maryland Correctional Administrators Association, the Maryland State Bar Association, the Maryland Office of the Public Defender, and then not necessarily law enforcement-adjacent, but local jurisdiction-adjacent, MAKO, the Maryland Association of Counties. Some of the quotes, and I'll just do one at a time, but this says that "The main task of local law enforcement is preventing, reducing, and investigating violent crimes. Successful crime investigations involve witness and victim cooperation. If a victim is fearful of coming to authorities to report the crime, the investigation into the crime therefore never occurs. The authorities must be seen as friends of, not threats to, the law-abiding immigrant community. House Bill twelve twenty-two will ensure that local law enforcement not only focus its limited resources upon the violent criminals within our communities, but will also ensure that a high level of trust is maintained between the police and the immigrant community." And it goes on from there, but it kind of... if that was the case, then people would just die out of fear of going to jail. And like, the equivalent of this would be, you know, somebody who's on an expired visa and is being beat by their husband, being fearful to call for police support because they don't want to get themselves in trouble and deported. Whereas obviously, the biggest priority is to get the person to stop being beat by their spouse, more so than their visa being expired in that moment. So do you have any thoughts on that from the Law Enforcement Action Partnership, or what would be your...
The biggest, the biggest one right off the bat is exactly what the narrative is that is used to sell this bill in Annapolis, the false narrative that this is not law enforcement. This is strictly in Maryland. There are law enforcement components in other states, but there is no law enforcement component in Maryland. It's strictly corrections-based. And although, as Sheriff, I oversee both law enforcement and corrections, they are not interchangeable. Our law enforcement deputies can't do the job of a correctional deputy in the facility. They're not certified, it's not allowed, and a correctional deputy cannot go out and grab a police car and respond to calls or pull people over. This is not law enforcement, period. This is not people on the side of the road or on calls being asked about their immigration status. This is when an individual, any individual, is arrested for a violation of law or sentenced to the jail and booked into the jail, that they are screened. You also hear the attacks that it's discriminatory. It's not discriminatory. Every single person that is arrested is screened, man, woman, regardless of your demographic background. Every person is screened, just like we do to see if somebody's wanted in Pennsylvania or in Delaware, you know, out of state, in a different jurisdiction. We go the extra step through this partnership of checking to see if the person is in the country illegally. And if found to be, then that is reported to ICE, and again, ICE makes the decision based on public safety and national security whether that person's going to face deportation proceedings. So first and foremost, it's not law enforcement. So when you hear about fear in the community, that's all something to sell a false narrative against the bill. I think here in Hartford County, we've done two different surveys to show that we have, our law enforcement, along with our municipal agencies, have overwhelming public support. And we've been through some terrible incidents where we've had members of the immigrant community involved, advanced-granted shooting being one of them, the Rachel Morin case being another one. I have never, in my, in my years, 10 years, eight years with the program, 10 years being sheriff, seen any data or factual support that these individuals are afraid to come forward and report things to our law enforcement, men and women. In fact, because if they're a victim of a crime or a witness, they can also apply for a U visa, which processes through our office, which allows them to actually stay. And most of the criminals, when you have a domestic violence incident like what you described, most of the criminal offenses, when you have gang members who are here, who are illegal, or other violent sorts of crime, usually happens to that, in that community, and they're victimized. So they would be able to apply for a U visa, but it's, like you gave the domestic violence situation, we're going to remove the aggressor, and that person would face deportation. There'd be no action taken against the other person. The counter to that is, and what I fear is going to happen if this bill passes, that ICE is going to come in, as we've seen in Illinois and Massachusetts, and ICE is going to come in and start hitting doors and taking everybody, instead of being selective and just taking the criminals in a very safe environment when somebody's already booked into a detention center. You know they're not armed, you can safely transfer them to ICE custody. I think ICE will come in, and it just happened the other day in Boston, where they came in in force, and they started knocking, you know, knocking on houses, and everybody goes. Those who haven't, who are in the country illegally but maybe haven't committed any other offense. So that, quickly on, I guess that wasn't too quickly, but on that point, and I know Eric knows a little bit about the status...
Yeah. Councilman, I can speak to the hearing. I was actually at the hearing on the House side in the House Judiciary Committee, and you'd mentioned those organizations and those groups, and I can tell you that the Maryland Correctional Administrators Association, their position was support with amendments. And what they wanted was, they wanted the ability to be able to hold individuals for 48 hours after their release date so that they could cooperate with Immigrations and Customs Enforcement and not have issues. The Attorney General issued an opinion a few months back, saying that there could be issues if you held somebody past their release date on a detainer. They wanted that put in law, so that's why they were willing to support that, knowing full well that, you know, there are only three agencies at the time, there are only three agencies in the state that had the 287G program. They were willing to give that portion up to be able to hold those inmates and cooperate with ICE. So I don't think that you saw a contingency of support from law enforcement at all on this legislation. I think you saw the exact opposite. The Maryland Sheriff's Association has taken a position opposed to this. We had chiefs, chiefs of police that were permitted by their mayors and their county executives come down and testify opposed to the legislation. So I think the, I'm not sure where the public defenders came into play and where Mako came into play, but, and the other law enforcement organization, I'm not familiar with them.
Law Enforcement Action Partnership?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with them.
Oh. It's retired law enforcement, I think. From the, I think this was the Public Defender's Office, they said such agreements require state and local agencies to use their own funds to carry out federal immigration enforcement activities. The federal government has the ability to carry out its own enforcement actions without Maryland doing so and paying for it themselves. And so I was just curious if you could speak to, how much do we spend on manpower per year to participate in this program? If you have an estimate?
I don't have an estimate. It's very, the cost is minute. In fact, ICE pays for everything. They pay for the training. The only thing they don't pay for is the on-duty time to facilitate the program. They pay for all the training, all the materials, the computer. They ran a T1, I think it's the right term, T1 line into the jail. So three weeks of training is our biggest commitment, that we send a deputy down there for three weeks of training down to Charleston, South Carolina, to be trained as a, to be certified as a deputy, I'm trying to think of the term they use, under the federal certification. But basically, so that they can fulfill some of ICE functions on this screening process. Other than that, it's an ancillary assignment when they come back. So if they're assigned to the processing center, they're assigned to security, and we have someone come in, then they go do the screening. It's a small commitment of their workday. By doing away with this, we didn't need to hire anybody to have this partnership. We don't need to terminate, we won't be able to terminate anybody if we don't have it. It's not that big of a commitment. Versus the public safety value of making sure that me, as sheriff, and the citizens of our county, that I don't have to open the jail doors to someone that a federal partner is saying poses a threat to public safety or national security. I easily justify, you know, any expense, but the expense is very minute. I know Frederick County had an audit a few years back, and he spoke about it, and it was less than one, I want to say it was less...
Less than one tenth of 1% of the Corrections Partnership.
Is what he did. Again, he's been in for 16 years, longest-serving, longest program in the country operating. So again, I think, in my role as sheriff, this is, there are hard decisions every day. Signing up for this program wasn't one of them, and it's been, I think, invaluable to public safety.
And two last questions. Hopefully, this one's very quick. The first one is, Mako, in their testimony for the legislation, spoke to how this program opens up local jurisdictions to increase liability as far as lawsuits or the like. And as you know, we've recently gone through the hardship that can come from that. In your eyes, what would be the increased liability, or how could it decrease liability to not have the program?
Yeah, and this is part of our agreement with ICE, that, you know, if we're doing the program the way our deputies, with the deputies who are trained to do it, which are the only people that interact, we, you know, they would assume those sorts of liability. I think that goes to the extent if we try to do ICE's job for them. I'm not interested in doing ICE's job for them. I am interested in partnering with a federal law enforcement slash public safety agency, just like we do with the FBI or DEA. They have their own duties to perform and function, but to be, you know, a fellow law enforcement officer and say that we're not going to work with, we're going to select which federal partners we're going to work with, makes no sense. So on the liability standpoint, again, I think we are protected, those three jurisdictions that participate in 287G. The Attorney General's opinion was very clear in that it dealt with people without agreements trying to take actions related to immigration. So I do not believe that that is a, that is not a concern that I have.
And then my last question, and it's actually appropriate, Mr. Robey's here, because you used to work in Anarundel County. Anarundel County no longer participates in the program, but they once did. And I know Frederick County, which you've referenced a few times, participate in the program, but the county executive and the mayor of the town of Frederick spoke in support of this legislation that would... So what was the strife in Anarundel County that led to them no longer participating? And why are Frederick County elected officials now saying that they want to do the same?
Sadly, this is, a public safety issue has become a political issue, and it's sad, because when Anarundel County elected a Republican, Steve Schu, he recognized the value of the public safety partnership, and he brought to, he sent the request letter, just as we did, and was accepted into the 287G program on their correctional facilities, until he lost his election four years later, and the other party came in and immediately canceled it. I actually went to Anarundel County and testified before their council, asking them not to make the mistake of counseling it. They canceled it anyway. Sadly, it's become party line. I can tell you, again, this is a, this started under a Democrat, Bill Clinton, in the 90s. We were added to the program by President Obama, you heard that. We heard no complaints, only cooperation, including from Lassos, which is a local organization in the county here that works with the immigrant community, supportive of the program, until President Trump was elected, the four years. And then for four years, this program was the worst thing you ever heard. Then President Biden was elected, and that administration, I haven't made any secrets, did a terrible job with the border. We had a lot more of illegal entries into the country. But this program operated the exact same way, with people being earmarked weekly for deportation proceedings, and we didn't hear a word about it. We're back to the first term, first year of President Trump's second term, and of course, here we are fighting this battle again. It's sad that politics have gotten in the way of a good public safety program that should be bipartisan.
I appreciate you answering all my questions.
Yes, Sheriff.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Ms. Roberts?
Good evening. How are you doing?
Well, how are you?
Good. I just wanted to start by saying, A, I am married to law enforcement, retired 23 years. And so my question is coming from a different perspective, from that perspective, and from being in the court system, and then doing my own research on 287G. And what I've found is that it's not a mandatory program for local law enforcement, and that it's voluntary, and that there's not a lot of other counties kind of participating in this program. But it's also saying that even if agencies aren't participating in the program, they can still cooperate with federal immigration authorities through other means, such as honoring the judicial warrants, detainers, without any formal delegation of authority from the 287 agreements provide. So my question is, if the 287G was not in existence right now, couldn't you still do what you're doing in the detention center, as, when they come in, processing them, and finding out the same information without needing the 287G?
I had this exact same question during the Senate. I testified on the Senate hearing last week, last week, and the exact same question. No, because we wouldn't have access to the ICE databases, so if someone had entered illegally and over state visa, we might be able to find that out through a fingerprint check. But if somebody had entered the country illegally and were never fingerprinted, then we wouldn't know who is here illegally. It also opens us up to the liability, I think, goes in contradiction, conflict with the guidance of the Attorney General, that we would be performing ICE's function instead of working as a partner agency with ICE by specially-trained and certified ICE, the deputies who receive the ICE training. So no, and I gave this example in Annapolis last week. When I was running for this office and talked about this program, people asked me, "How bad is it? How many do we see?" Well, the answer was, we had no clue, because we weren't, we didn't have a method to check. Now that we've had a method, we know that more than 1,000 in eight years have come through our doors, and ICE has taken action on more than 100, is more than 100, almost 300 individuals that they have earmarked for deportation, again, saying that that's a public safety or national security threat. So yeah, I don't believe we can do it, and I think we would be opening ourselves up to the liability of trying to do some job without the oversight and the guidance, the audits that come from being with ICE. We agree to be audited every three years. We've been through two audits, and we've done fine, but they control everything. I don't think we've had one complaint from an inmate throughout the entire eight years. I don't want to jinx myself, but I don't think we've had one complaint, it would go to, ICE should be investigated by ICE about any impropriety with the program in eight years.
If I can give you just one example, and this is a public example, and it happened three weeks ago in Cecil County. They had an inmate that they arrested. Once they ran this inmate through the 287G program, they've realized that the individual was in the country illegally. Through further investigation, they realized this individual had committed crimes in other jurisdictions in other states 11 different times, 11 different crimes. So this is someone that had been through the justice system, had been booked into detention facilities, but because those facilities didn't have the 287G program, this individual never came up on the radar for Immigrations and Customs Enforcement. That's what the 287G program does. This individual is also somebody that was charged with sexual touching of a minor. These aren't people we want in our communities. These individuals, if they would get arrested in Montgomery County or Prince George's County, even though they have their version of cooperation with Immigration and Customs Enforcement, they're never screened the way that they are in Cecil County, in Hartford County, in Frederick County. So those individuals, if they're not on ICE's radar, they'll never be detected.
So that leads me to my next question. So for example, as I said, law enforcement, and so say, for example, someone is arrested, and the fear, I believe, of what's going on, is that someone's going to get pulled over, they're not going to have a driver's license, they may or may not be a US citizen, and does that mean that everyone who does not have US citizen status is going to be incarcerated, held, and sent to immigration? I think that is like the biggest question mark that the public has, and that's why you see so much discussion around this issue.
Well, and I can tell you, one of the things in pursuing this as a candidate, and as, after I became sheriff, I want them, I want people who are criminally illegal aliens to fear coming to Hartford County. I want them to go somewhere else. I want them to go to Baltimore City. I want them to go somewhere that wants to accept more crime and not be here in Hartford County. You don't get locked up for driving without a license, you get a ticket, and then you go to court. Now, if the court sentenced you to jail as a result of that, then you might get screened in, but you're not going to get screened in for getting pulled over without a license. Maryland legislature has made it so you can't arrest on many of the suspended charge, driving while suspended charges. So it really takes something, and I don't like to use the word minor, it takes something like a driving while impaired. There are a lot of people lost in this country every year to impaired drivers, but it takes something like driving while impaired for you to be booked, taken to the jail, and then the commissioner saying, "We're going to hold you on a bond," for some reason. You know, a lot of the, even intoxicated drivers, impaired drivers are cut loose from the commissioner's office, if not from the roadside. So then you get into the true criminal offenses, things like, you know, selling drugs, domestic violence, things like that, that where they get booked in and actually held. But I will, one of the things that was brought up is, we've seen people driving while suspended get earmarked for deportation, whereas someone with a domestic violence maybe does not. And again, it's not based on what their local charges is, it's based on what ICE knows about the individual, and those two priorities of public safety and national security. And I give the example of the individual who took Rachel Morin's life. Had he been, had he come through ICE and maybe got locked up here for impaired driving, what they would have known that we did not know is that he had a red notice for murder from El Salvador, and people would have looked at him and said, "Look, he got impaired driving, and they're going to deport him." He's not being deported, he's going to, if found guilty, serve his days here in the Department of Corrections. So, but that is an example of, they have systems that we don't have access to, that they make the decision, not my deputies who are... of Corrections. So, but that, that is an example of, they have systems that we don't have access to that they, they make the decision, not my deputies who are trained and not me as sheriff. They make the decision and they don't make it in all the cases. So and again, 35% of, I think it's 35%, there's no action taken. And if a detainer is filed, it doesn't necessarily mean deportation, it means they're going to go through the proceedings to see whether they should be deported.
And I guess lastly, you know, since you've been doing the program, do you have a number of how many individuals have gone through ICE and have been deported?
The data belongs to ICE, but we put it out on our, just under, it's just under 300. We have to have approval, but every, we have to have a community meeting every, how many years? Every three years. So that last community meeting is up on our website, the data from that, at, at that point in time, the program. And I can tell you, at that point in time, the biggest country for people who were entering illegally or here illegally was Germany. This was 2022?
That was the 20, 2020.
Covid. But Germany was the biggest country. You know, you, a lot of people are going to automatically jump to Mexico or El Salvador or something like that. It was Germany at that time.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Sodles.
Thank you. Thank you guys for being here this evening. In my opinion, we're seeing far too many horrific crimes that have been happening by illegal individuals, just in my district alone. The murder of Kayla, it's, it's horrific. And anything that we can do to stop this, it seems like this program is what we need and I fully support it. So thank you.
Anyone else while we wrap this up? Sheriff, as always, I appreciate you coming, appreciate the presentation, appreciate the job that you and your men and women at Sheriff's Office do for us every day. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Jan Giordano, may I have a motion, please?
Council President, I move to approve Resolution 007-25.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved in second to approve Resolution 007-25. Is there any more discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mrs. Robert?
Nay.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Will Sodle?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
No.
There being four votes in the affirmative, two in the negative, one vacant, Resolution 007-25 is hereby approved. And as a reminder, because this is an action item tonight, citizens will not be allowed to speak to it. They have to come back next week. Agenda number nine, introduction of bills, we have none. Ten, introduction and consideration of amendments, none. Call for final reading of bills, none. Twelve enrollment of bills, none. Thirteen unfinished business, we have none. Fourteen new business, alternate hearing examiner agreement with Judge Emory Plitt. Ms. Algee?
I always get yelled at for not using this. Because the streaming can't hear me, which I find shocking.
Me too.
So, so what you have before you is a contract for an alternate zoning hearing examiner. As you all know, Bob Cahoe is our primary hearing examiner. He's currently under contract, but there comes a time when he might have a conflict with an applicant or a property owner in one of the cases, or sometimes there's just such a volume that we need to have an alternate. Rather than having to come before you guys on a case-by-case basis for a contract approval for every time there's a conflict, it makes a lot more sense to enter into this alternate hearing examiner contract so that we've got somebody in place. Should there be a conflict, the zoning hearing assistant can just contact them and get the hearing scheduled. Retired Judge Emory Plitt has heard some of these cases before when there's been conflicts. I think his resume speaks for itself, former county attorney, former retired judge, he's very well versed in zoning and land use matters, very well versed in the Board of Appeals procedure. So he's an excellent candidate for this. So that's what this contract is. It's hiring him to be our alternate hearing examiner, should we need him.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Mr. Jan Giordano, may I have a motion, please?
Council President, I move to approve the alternate hearing examiner agreement for Mr. Pitt.
Thank you.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved in second to approve the alternate hearing examiner agreement for Mr. Plitt. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bennett?
I just think this is great. It helps save us one less vote, or hopefully not too many votes, but, because this does come up every now and then and it's just one more thing that clogs our agendas and time. So I'm glad we're building some inefficiency with that. I know the contract expires in the summer, next summer, 2026, which that would mean at that point, we would need to enter a new contract or renew.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do it probably on a yearly basis at that point, like we do with Mr. Cahoe, People's Council's contracts. So now they will all come to you probably once a year to all be renewed, but you won't have to do it piecemeal throughout the year.
And the timing of that, would it be appropriate for us to, because the contract ends on June 30th, we could vote prior to June 30th?
Yes, absolutely, within effective date of July 1. And that's what we will do for all of those, you're going to see soon coming before you, the People's Council and Mr. Cahoe's contracts, they'll all be done probably in May, with effective date of July 1. We'll do the same thing with this next year.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mrs. Robert?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Will Sodle?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being six votes in affirmative, one vacant, the alternate hearing examiner agreement for Mr. Plitt is hereby approved. We're going to move to agenda item number 17, comments and input from attending citizens. Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
I believe we just have one this evening, Mr. President, Wendy McPherson.
She was already up and headed to the microphone.
I heard my number.
Name and address, please.
Wendy McPherson, 1727 Crissara Court, Forest Hill, Maryland. So I've been a volunteer at the Humane Society and an animal lover all my life, so this is something that's of interest of me, to me. Several cases are being reported about the Humane Society of Harford County allegedly euthanizing treatable animals. A no-kill animal shelter does not kill treatable animals. One of the shelter's veterinarians just resigned because a treatable puppy was euthanized without cause after she made it clear that she had planned to adopt the puppy. No-kill means 90% or more of the animals that enter a shelter will leave alive. The shelter's live release rate has been publicly requested starting four months ago. To the shelter's Board of Directors, including President George Idelmeyer and Attorney Charles Wellington, please publicly post your animal data on a regular basis so there may be an independent calculation of your organization's live release rate for 2023 forward. There is no 2024 animal data on your website. Your posted animal data from 2023 appears to indicate a live outcome rate of just 79%, which is below the 90% threshold to be considered a no-kill shelter. Please clarify. Please address the growing number of reports of treatable animals being euthanized under your care, pets that had a clear pathway to leave the shelter alive. And now to the county, to the Harford County, County, County Council, please help, please help our citizens understand the county's mechanism of oversight for this private entity that receives about 70% of its $1.4 million operation budget from our taxpayer dollars and the rest from extremely generous donations. 2022 revenue was $3.08 million. Please explain why the Humane Society of Harford County is currently operating in the red by an excess of $600,000. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
With no more speakers, we'll move on to item number 16, business from council members. Ms. Robert?
Thank you. I just wanted to let everyone know, I attended the events of the Bush Declaration anniversary. I did the Saturday morning at the Bel Air Armory. It was very nice, they had a nice portrait. It was, it was a really nice event. And presented a proclamation there for the anniversary committee. And then that next day, on Sunday, I attended the Bush Declaration Celebration Dinner and my friend and I ended up sitting next to four of Robert Ely's relatives and they were a hoot. Four, they were four sisters out of 16. It's crazy. But it was a really nice event and so I was happy to be there and celebrate with them. And I, let's see, what else did I do? I have attended the Mental Health and Addictions Advisory Council Meeting and we are still trying to streamline how that looks for suicide prevention as well as crisis management, putting case managers and law enforcement together to kind of respond to crises. And I attended the Chosen Community Development Corporation Women's History and Recognition Program. That was very nice, honoring children from a very young age to a legacy. And on a side note, I actually knew one of the recipients and didn't realize it until after she was gone that I, I worked with her sister. So I congratulated that mother today when I saw her. So, and that's pretty much for me, except for I will say that on a fun note, the NAACP Freedom 5K Race Registration opened today and we do that so that we can get scholarship money for those who want to go to college. So you can run, you can walk, it'll be at the mom-pa trail.
Awesome. Thank you. Mr. Jan Giordano?
Thank you, Council President. On March 20th, I attended the Department of Emergency Services Annual, Annual Award Ceremony of a Level Fire Hall along with Council President Vincenti, who I'm sure will mention some special guests that got some special awards there. So we had on March 22nd, the Sciab Gala where we donated $25,000. We do that annually every year, was held at Water's Edge. They did a fabulous job and I think they surprised everybody with 20 minutes worth of fireworks. So that was quite nice. And then on March 31st, we did the first Tony Talk. We highlighted Let Go Wellness Center off of Gateway Drive. They had their one-year anniversary about two weeks ago, so if you visit my councilman Facebook page, you will see our interview with Brenda. So thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Giordano and Mr. Riley. Tony Talk, Riley?
Yeah, I was thinking too. I was like, Tony Talk?
Oh, geez. Hey. My thoughts and prayers go out to the Rachel Morin's family as they navigate the trial up the street. Please pray for the, the family and hopefully some justice will come. Thanks. Thank you. Ms. Sodles?
Thank you. Last week, I attended the Aberdeen Chamber of Commerce luncheon and I had the opportunity to present Ron, filling the chamber president with a council citation for his 75th birthday. He, he does so much for our community. So that was a pleasure and I have been and will continue to hold meetings with constituents regarding the comprehensive planning and zoning issues within the district. And I look forward to everyone's input and feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sodles. Mr. Bennett?
Hello. You know, Councilman Riley, if you're jealous of the Tony Talks, maybe you could do the Jim Jab or you could do the Riley Ramble, you know, depending on how much you have to say. But, you know, we can come up with something. You don't need to be jealous.
I don't do much rambling.
I've been really busy meeting with the county executive and his staff, meeting of planning and zoning to go over all the zoning recommendations in detail, meeting with water and sewer today. Late last week, I met with the county executive regarding the upcoming budget and shared with him some of my priorities for District F. And one of the things I made sure to express to him is while I voted no on the past two budgets, it's not my goal to vote no on a budget, my goal is to have a budget I can vote yes on. And so I'm hoping that with ample communication and working together, we can get to a point this year where there's a budget that I, I can feel comfortable having my name behind. And, you know, I know that's something that we're all thinking about right now. I've been in communication with my local volunteer fire companies in my district, asking them what they need, communicating with all those outside entities that we work with that receive grant and aid funding or the like and asking what they need. It's going to be a tough season with a lot of squeezes and it's just figuring out how we take care of people. So that's really been my biggest priority. Outside of that, I've been speaking with and meeting with elected officials in other counties in Maryland, just to hear about their current budget situation and try and learn, what have they done to, to navigate this road? Because I figure if we can learn from other people, it can help us to, to navigate this successfully and help take care of people. So that's been really productive. And then last, I just want to recognize that on April 5th, at the Star Center in Havity Grace, there's going to be a program called Women's Voices in American Poetry and it's going to be a lot of fun to hear women from Harford County stand up and, and read poetry. I've gone the past few years to that event and it's always tremendous and it's a great way, just as Women's History Month comes to an end, to, to celebrate and recognize the great women of Harford County. So that's everything I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Fifteen business from the President. We'll talk and advertise budget work session schedules again Wednesday, April 23rd at 9:00 a.m., Thursday, April 24th at 9:00 a.m., Monday, April 28th at 10:00 a.m., and Tuesday, April 29th at 9:00 a.m. All are in this chamber. They're all work sessions with all of our county partners and department heads and all of our outside agencies that receive funding from the county budget. Also, our budget, or public, our budget public hearings are May 5th, or excuse me, May 7th and Thursday, May 15th at 7:00 p.m. also in these chambers. We attended the Harford County Chamber Economic Outlook Breakfast at the Country Club this past week with the Acting Secretary for Maryland of Commerce, Harry Coker, Dr. Darius Arani and Ms. Karen Holt, who spoke about economic, their economic forecast for the county and the state. We also attended the Aberdeen Royery Bull Roast. It's always a great crowd, huge crowd. All of the monies that benefit that organization go, or raise that, that organization benefit the Ark Northern Chesapeake region, the Harford County Public Library Summer Reading Program, and then scholarships across the county that also include new scholarships for Harford Community College for students that are looking to get into trades. Also attended the Aberdeen Chamber of Commerce Luncheon, had an opportunity to speak with Colonel Milton Wel. He's a Garrison Commander at APG. He will be coming to give us an update and presentation before he leaves APG very soon. So we're trying to get that on the books and then also the major generals scheduled to come as well. So we're trying to line all that up. Today, after this past week, we received the formal notification from the Republican Central Committee that the three names that they picked are Mr. Russ English, Mr. Joseph Xavier and Ms. Allison Enhoff. Council members have received all that information, they're lining up interviews as we speak. I had the opportunity to speak to and, and interview all three today. And I believe that my idea of moving forward is that we will have them interviewed between now and the 15th, have them sit with us on the night of the 15th to give a little update about themselves, introduce themselves. I think it's important that for someone that's going to be appointed to represent a district, the citizen should have an opportunity to listen to and see that person before that person moves forward, if, if that's what happens indeed. So we're looking forward to that. Also, Councilman Jan Giordano talked about the DES Awards. Both of my girls received awards that night, one for public service and one for their 20 years of service. And then finally, just want to acknowledge everyone and thank them for the anniversary well wishes for Jeannie and I. Yesterday, we celebrated our 50th wedding anniversary and just had a very nice quiet day with dinner finishing at Acapella's. So it was just a great evening and I want to thank everyone again. With that, we'll adjourn this meeting.